Where else could go here?
Yeah.
Well, about sixteen.
That's crazy.
Hey, man.
That's just one bar to the man.
That's crazy.
Malcolm, were you supposed to sit here so you can have the computer so I can move? Is that better?
I hear okay.
Let me move so you can.
Let's put Malcolm in the middle.
Yeah, that makes sense, huh?
It's a sitcom. That's his nickname, Malcolm in the Middle. That's what I keep thinking.
Good one.
It is, huh? It's a kid's name, not actor.
Frank Franky Munin, see Franky Munin?
Yeah, Frankie Munin, something like that. So it's a, it's a term, it's an endearment. It's not, it's a compliment.
Good one.
Yeah, I don't mind it. Have you seen that show Malcolm in the Middle?
I remember watching it.
You're like, how did you call him? How did you name me that? I was about to retell you the character.
Yeah, you go out. I didn't mind it there. I didn't mind.
Ah, that's good.
I wonder if he did. Then what?
What's your middle?
Uh, Thomas.
Thomas?
Yeah. Everyone at Army and Seven, every in my family started listening to him. They'd end, and they got to me, they're like.
What's your mom's name?
Mary Mary.
Well, no wonder then.
They had a, yes, they had a mat and a mic. So they had the normal endings with the M and the N, but they didn't make one up.
That's good.
Can we hear you guys? Hey Jacob, do you hear me?
Yes.
Can you be setting here? Did I hear you?
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me?
Pretty good.
Cool.
Alright.
Well, let's go ahead and get this meeting called to order then. This is a work meeting with Planning Commission and City Council to discuss updates that need to be done with the subdivision ordinance as was directed by the state. We have been working with the Hanson Group. If you remember, this was actually supposed to be in place February first, and we're just a little behind, but that's okay. We'll have it done before the end of the year. So I think all of you should have received a copy that Morgan printed out. And I'm just going to turn the time over to Malcolm and Jacob and maybe let them do presentations. We're already really happy to, also really happy to have Madison with us. I think you've met her before. She is our local administrative assistant, and she has done a lot of work on this. Um, has met with staff trying to review everything, and so maybe let them kind of go through and explain some of the changes and then we kind of answer questions. Does that, does that probably work? So.
Yeah, and Jacob and Madison, you guys chime in, but I feel like if you guys want to take the lead on walking through a few things, we can go to the rest of it. But in terms of Ben for our book, um, we kind of, we're looking and it looks like if we work on chapter eight primarily for this one.
Yeah.
And then, uh, we'll discuss the remainder of what time may be left.
Yeah.
Then, um, we can kind of see how we want to approach the other chapters moving forward since they were just minor alterations. So would Barrett if we ran through chapter eight and got everyone up to speed?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that sounds great to me, and I, I'm just seeing a logo of the city, so I mean, forgive me if I don't see a hand raise or something like that. But definitely want to echo, uh, you know, a huge thanks to Madison for, you know, going up there and meeting with you guys. So I don't know when we, when we couldn't make it in and out, it's been great as well. So I usually, you know, how I can be helpful, I have like five slides or so I try to, uh, that's a little better.
Okay, catch it on the phone.
I have a few slides that focus on, I think, chapter eight, that just kind of try to summarize like what are the main steps that an application goes through. So we can talk about that, but I'm also happy if you want to pull up the draft and we can just kind of like walk through different comments that our team has left in there, or if you just have to read through it already and want to ask questions, I'm just here to help. So let me know what would be great.
Why don't you go ahead and pull up your slides and explain chapter eight through the slides, and then we can ask questions on it?
Sure. Alright, well, see, I'll just, uh, turn my screen real fast.
I just have the question on the red line one. Is that what's taken out then, or what's added too? I'll ask Jacob.
Is that for me? Yeah, so if depending on the version you're looking at, the color might be different, but if there's a strike through, that means we deleted it from your code. If it's just underlined in some color, then that means we added it or we moved it from a different section. So there was a little confusion because one of the drafts we sent you was comparing the current version with the last version, and then one of the versions we sent was comparing the current version to what you have on your website right now. So, um, was, yeah, some of the changes, you know, we may have like added something in the first draft and then moved it in the second. You might be wondering where did this come from? I didn't realize we had the center code, and that's because it's the version that compares both the two drafts.
But in terms of chapter eight, just to get everyone on the same page, it's entirely, it's entirely new. There's no precedence, there's no current code. Chapter eight would be an entirely new addition, right?
That's totally correct.
Good.
And then really quick, those that are here, the ones that are in the packet don't have the red line in it. Um, we put what was gonna be officially. So if you want me to go through more red line ones?
No, that's fine. And again, that's what's added too then? The red lines.
Yep. Sorry, Jacob.
Oh, you're, you're good. Okay, so, um, yeah, just like wave or shout at me if I, I'm just talking away if there's questions. But I did, it's just as a really general recap, I'm sure that Madison's already talked to you about the general principles the state is trying to enforce, um, with the idea of street ringlining residential development. And then, you know, kind of the back and forth and the balancing act that we have to play to make sure that you're still preventing bad development and still letting the city control the things that is controlful. So with that being said, I wish our drafts could be shorter, and I wish it didn't have to be so invasive, but at least for this new chapter that we're adding, we, it's kind of as clear as it's gonna get. But if there are certain things you want to change, just please let me know, and then we'll do what we can to adjust it. So.
All changes that we discussed at the city level have been updated, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're all on the same page.
So everything, that's right. So everything we talked about in our last meetings, we put in the draft. So, um, can you guys all see this screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't know if, there's like a little laptop or something, but some of you won't be that helpful, but. Okay, so at the beginning, okay, so let me just back up and say, what I'm about to say is we know you apply only to chapter eight. This means it only applies to applications for single-family, duplex, and townhomes to the extent in where you allow that by zoning. So if the areas aren't residential, they're like single-family, someone comes in with an application to build single-family homes, then it's gonna follow this process I'm about to describe. If it's a maverick or commercial or other industrial type use, it's gonna follow your old process. So that, basically, just keep that distinction in your mind. Alright, so if someone wants to build some townhomes, if you allow those, or, you know, at least some residential houses, first step is an optional concept plan, conference. Um, basically, this can be with anyone. In your current code, we have the land use authority, who we have as the planning commission, which is actually something we need to discuss. But we currently have the planning commission, uh, holding this. Basically, once someone requests the meeting, city staff put the person on the next planning commission agenda, and everything should be good. There's no requirements here except that the applicant, uh, just needs to request it, and the city has to hold the meeting. So the app, the idea is that the applicant can bring any sort of documents. They can bring a concept plan, they could bring half of an application, they could bring a full-blown plot ready to be recorded, and they can just get, uh, feedback. If you'd like, we can actually add at least some highly recommended elements of like a concept plan so that they're not wasting their time. But, you know, so I guess keep that in mind. Okay, so that's the easy step, optional. Technically, the applicant can just apply if they want to, so that's step number two.
Can you go, can you go back, can you go back to the concept conference, sorry? I may have misheard you. So that one tell that when and with who? Did you say it's with planning commission?
Yeah, we currently have it written in as the land use authority, which is the planning commission. We can change that. We can change who the land use authority is if you want, and there's a reason, basically has to do with whether the planning commission's gonna meet regularly enough to meet the fifteen day turnaround deadline. We'll talk about that more in just a sec. But, um, in principle, we can, we can have someone meet with, like, a potential applicant, meet with anyone. So if you want to delegate this to the technical review committee, staff, engineer, uh, all of the above, just whoever's available, let us know. But currently, it's the planning commission.
Can I ask a question on that before we move on?
Yes.
When you mentioned the technical review committee, I didn't see anywhere in here where that defined that. My thoughts were if this is initial, when they come in for like a concept meeting, would it be appropriate to have like engineering, public works, uh, the city planner, a member of the planning commission there, the people that are gonna be involved in this process upfront, the city attorney possibly, before it moves past that point to make sure everything is okay? Is that the technical review committee? Can we define what that is?
Yes, absolutely. So if you'd like, we can even make this technical review committee the land use authority so that, um, the application, like, doesn't even have to go to the planning commission. Or we could even do something, uh, uh, well, yeah, we could even do something fancier where maybe the technical review committee looks at it first a couple of times, and then maybe in the last review cycle, it goes to the planning commission. We can get pretty creative. What the state requires is that there is a single administrative land use authority, and it can be the planning commission, um, or it could be, uh, the, you know, this committee, it could be an individual, it could be like your planning commission chair, it could be your city attorney. So you just have to pick one person who's gonna have the final say, or a one body.
So.
And then aside from that, you could have any, any number of city staff, uh, commenting or contributing.
So on, in the beginning where it talks about the, the, um, assignments or the responsibilities of the land use authority, it, it designates the planning commission as the land use authority, but then it says we can delegate some of these things to different people. And so is it, would it be possible that, like, for this concept conference and some of the other things that I've highlighted here, we could designate the technical review committee for those, maybe like you said, for the first couple steps in that process, and then have it come to the actual planning commission for final approval? But that would kind of be the first step, is having this technical review committee look at it first and make sure all of those things are in order before it actually comes to the commission? Can we do that where?
Yes, we, yes, we can.
Okay.
So we did write the draft a little bit broadly, so like you pointed out, we wrote in there that the land use authority's gonna be the planning commission. They're in charge of everything technically, but they can delegate anything. And so we can make it more explicit, um, in other places, but in principle, yeah, just like you said, um, the state law really only requires, when we get into the review cycles and the deadlines, the state law really only applies to the city as a whole. So whenever the city requires revisions, that's like a review cycle, and they can only do that four times. So it doesn't really matter if the planning commission itself is the one to require those, or whether it delegates, you know, this round to the engineer, or the technical review committee, and then the planning commission just signs off at the end.
And can I interject really quick to go back on the TRC? Um, it's not defined in your current chapter because it would have to live under, it would be an enabling ordinance that would live under the land use authority in title ten of your city code. And so that would be a separate ordinance that would have to be passed to find what the TRC would be and what membership would be. And then it would allow that section of TRC in chapter eight to become active.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the planning commission, at least what I saw in the state code, designates the land use authority for certain situations, and we would work with the city council to come up with that ordinance so that we could decide who is gonna be designated, maybe as a technical review committee or something?
It would have to be.
Is that my understanding of that?
Right, and I think the enabling ordinance for the TRC, I would recommend it be done at the same time of the adoption of chapter eight because you would want it defined before chapter eight is in, is in code.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just gonna, it has to live in a separate part of your code as an enabling ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think if we're dealing with chapter, or with title ten, we're already touching chapters five through now eight. So we could just add, if it was in chapter three or one, um, we could also add to that land use authority, if you have a table, and, and describe what the, who the, the TRC is and what they do.
That would make sense, because you guys already review things before they come to the planning commission now, and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. I think that definitely the concept part is very valuable to everybody involved, but the developer also to know what his challenges are with the project and, you know, the other thing I think that's important, we deal with outside entities that aren't under the city umbrella. So getting them to those, having them part of the TRC may be important too, like the culinary water, secondary water.
So kind of like we've done concept meetings in the past?
Yeah.
Just having those same representatives. I don't know if we still would have a member of the city council attend those or not because they can't be part of this, this process anyway, so I don't know what the thought is on having them there just for input. They don't get to be a decisioning body for this, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
It has to be an administrative.
I, yeah, just do engineer, public works, and staff like you do now.
Well, and I think planning commission needs to be a part of that meeting too, since we're a part of this process. It wouldn't, I don't think we should.
Yeah.
Probably not city council, because it's a part of the authority, and that would be good.
To a conflict.
Yeah.
We're keeping it as a land use authority being planning commission, and planning commission is then going to defer the scheduling and the conducting of concept meetings to the TRC.
Right, which the planning commission will still be a part of. They'll still be represented. One of us would attend that meeting too.
They'll be in the TRC.
So that we're still in the loop of what's going on.
That was, that was just great.
But I think if we have, and we include the outside entities like Jared was saying.
Is that an issue in the TRC to have outside entities, like Hooper Water Improvement District, or?
No, I don't think so. I mean, there is, uh, we do have other requirements that would basically force the applicant to have already presented this to certain other, like, authorities. For example, part of the application requirements is that, uh, they have to have, like, the applicant has to have a letter of approval from, I think, the culinary water, sanitary sewer, and then I think would we, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we can have things like the local fire department, uh, police department, things like that. So in that way, I mean, that, that's one way of getting at it, because then, um, ideally, those authorities have already reviewed and kind of given approval of the application before it's submitted. But we, in addition, and or instead of, we could just include them in the TRC. One thing, I guess, with the TRC, if it's not going to be approving anything, then this doesn't really matter. You could put as many people as possible, but at some point, it does get a little unwieldy if you have like fifty people in this committee. And then, and you just probably practically have to realize that you might not have everyone meeting at the same time to review the application, and maybe you just, if it's an advisory committee to the planning commission anyway, then maybe you just accept, you know, comments as they come and give them to the, the planning commission every so often.
Couldn't we just designate that the TRC is made up with city staff, planning commission, engineering, public works, city attorney? Not those outside entities, but still include those outside entities in that concept meeting so that they can give feedback, but without being designated as part of that committee?
Yeah, that's possible.
Good.
In the past, we haven't had the attorney be part of the concept conferences. Is that something that we want to have the attorney be part of them? They, they haven't came before.
What are, what do you guys think?
My thought is that it's not, it, I don't think it would be required for them to attend, but if you include them on the enabling ordinance, you could have, you could have them at the option, right?
I feel like it might be helpful, at least in the beginning, till we get this up and off the ground, so we make sure we're not doing anything we're not supposed to be doing, then if we get comfortable with it, maybe later on, we could, I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah.
I guess we could have it as an option, and they wouldn't always have to come. There may be someone more interested in coming to it now.
Right, yeah.
So the way it was just written is that the land use authority will receive requests and then schedule. It's fine written that way. We're just going to imply that they're deferring to the TRC to receive the request and schedule. Are we all on the same page? Because it's written that the L U A will receive and schedule.
Well, and that's what, because.
Which is fine, as long as, I don't think you guys technically want to do that though, so we'll do it instead.
Yeah, I would think it would be better if maybe you kind of were coordinating that. I, I went through the ordinance and like all the different things, all the different assignments. I kind of made a note of who I thought we should maybe designate that to, because it doesn't make sense for the planning commission to be doing some of those things. So I was hoping we could just kind of go through and piece by piece say who, as a group, what we think would be better.
Yeah, and if you prefer, we can put that in the ordinance. We could say, city staff is gonna accept the application, you flip through, make sure it's complete, send it to these people, schedule the pre-application conference if it happens. You know, we, we could be more granular like that if you like.
I'm okay with how it is, as long as, I'm okay with it written how it is for the land use authority to receive and schedule them, but technically, the TRC will do it.
It gives you more flexibility in the event, and then maybe fifteen years down the line, there is a position change, or, you know, I'm not saying anyone's going anywhere, but should people go places or positions not be refilled, it might give the city more flexibility.
So where it says the land use authority is responsible for the following, but may delegate any task to the technical review committee or other city staff, without like having an ordinance that says it, can we have just a, like, something in writing or a document that we know, okay, this group is handling this, the TRC's handling that, or what, just so we know what our roles are and we make sure that, because that can be changed without having to go through like the ordinance process, right?
We could put one together in-house, I suppose.
I think it's an administrative function.
Yeah, and I think that's a great idea to have, at least, you know, like, an inch, something actually we've done for some other cities, um, especially some who maybe don't want to tie themselves down on with, you know, all of their internal regulations in their code, is have a little more general of an ordinance, and then basically like you were suggesting, we have an internal guide that gives more detail for staff, and even can go over some, um, state requirements that aren't in their code. Uh, you know, things like rare situations and, and references and firm art formation and stuff like that. So I think that's a great idea.
Barrett, I'm uncomfortable with the concept conferences. Sorry to interrupt your presentation. You can continue. I know that was just a minor part of it, but we can go to the application, we can go to the application part now.
Well, but you're making a good point, because a lot, a lot of cities have all of those entities under one roof. See, and that, and we don't have that. So I think that was a good part of this discussion to show that secondary water, culinary water has to be brought in from outside.
For sure.
Okay, noted. So the next step is actually submitting an application. And this is just an example we have there up on the screen of what your application could look like. You guys may have forms already that you love and, you know, adore. Um, otherwise, we'll just send you, um, a form that will create, oh, it's something like this. Basically, some instructions, and then this is just like the first part of it, but then there'll be a long checklist of everything basically matching your ordinance that the applicant has to, uh, submit. And this is really important, uh, because for someone, you know, officially in the process, land use authority, but practically, it'll be your city staff looking just to make sure that all of the pieces are there, because none of the state deadlines or requirements, uh, actually start until a complete application has been submitted, and you get to define what is the complete application. Alright, so then there's this kind of random step of city staff practically, though I think it's the land use authority, um, in the code, needs to notify a couple of people. The one state requirement is the owners of water conveyance facilities. That's any ditches, canals, or other easements for irrigation and secondary water. It's just something the state puts out there, so, because basically if there's a canal going across, uh, a, a lot, you gotta make sure that you preserve the flow of water before you can divide it up and turn it into towns. Um, so we'll put that in your code. If you'd like, we can add other people to this list. So like, if you want us to automate, like, city staff, if you want to write in there, that they'll automatically notify, you know, in, internally with the city and maybe some outside entities like your culinary water, or primary water, um, your sewer and things like that. We can do that, or we can just leave that in an internal document, and you guys could just do that by practice.
I like having a process and writing that we do. I think it avoids confusion. And just, if you're gonna notify one water entity, why not just notify both culinary and upper irrigation? I don't know if that would encompass like the fire district and all that stuff too, or? Because we, the time starts ticking, right, once we tell them?
Or do we want the applicant to do that? Because right now, the applicant has to give all the will serve letters and.
Well, isn't this something different though? Like, doesn't it say in here that we have to notify them?
This is upon receiving, this is upon determining the complete application, right? So the fifteen days is starting, and this is the first step? There needs to be a notification? Is that right?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, technically, this is like, is this like technically a separate requirement from the other fifteen day review deadline? But it just says for the first time that you get an application, then the city, then this is what the state says. I mean, in practice, it's just important that the people are notified, but it says the city needs to notify any of these owners of the water conveyance facilities, and you're supposed to look at like the state's inventory of canals, and there's a couple other resources I believe we put in your code, where you're supposed to just at least be aware of where all these are.
So if they brought a will serve letter in this packet, does that count that we can say they've been notified? Or do we still need to notify them as well as get the will serve letter?
Uh, I mean, so the way, the, the question was if you give them a copy of the application, or if, if they provide the letter, you say?
Yeah, when they bring their packet in, they should have a will serve letter from these companies, so.
Well.
So this is a, this is technically a little different. So I, I think the current requirement we have in there is the applicant has to have a letter, like a will serve letter, and then this would be not for sewer or primary water. This would be for ditches and canals that are due irrigation, um, and secondary water. And so those, there isn't like, as far as I know, an entity that controls all of those. So, um.
You get, you know, what is it?
They're run separate.
Makes sense, what entity we have that does this well.
Upper irrigation and then.
But the thing of it is, there's, there's a little difference, because they, they would send a will serve wet, uh, letter if, if that water, you know, comes from Hooper Irrigation. It wouldn't define where a ditch might be coming through that has to be piped or something like that. Will serve means it's just within that Hooper Irrigation's district to deliver water. It doesn't tell us if there's an irrigation ditch or something else that needs to be, a will serve letter wouldn't tell you that.
So just do both, right?
But they need to be both.
Do both, because like I said, the state, we have to.
What'd you say?
Oh, I said, we, we'd have to do both, because he's saying, the state says, now we have to let them, the water conveyance.
And I think Hooper Irrigation or, or an entity like that would be happy to do that. You know, they, they'd probably want to do that.
Well, we might have an issue where, I mean, you get all the tail or less we were.
Yeah.
So I, I'm confused on something, because when you talk about a will serve letter, my understanding is we're not doing preliminary approvals. This is all for a final, so wouldn't we want a final letter?
Yeah, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is if we got a letter from them, do we still need to inform them that it's happening? But it sounds like that we do, so.
Yeah.
But we'll need final letters, right? No will serve anymore, if I'm understanding correctly.
It's a long one process, yeah.
Okay.
It does say letters of approval in the application requirements, and then the district's Hooper Water Improvement District, Weaver Morgan County Health Department, Irrigation Company, Weaver County Fire Marshal, any other utility company involved, Roy City, West Haven City, or any municipality sharing a boundary with the proposed development. So those will all be a part of a completed application, and so you would then utilize all of those letters of approval to do your notifications, right?
But could we change the wording in there just to make sure it specifies final approval letters? Because for a long time, we've accepted, those entities are used to giving us preliminary approval, or will serve letters rather than final. I just want to make sure that what we have that we give to the developer, they know for sure that we need the final, not the will serve. So that if we're wanting a complete package, they know that has to be a part of the complete package.
And it'll be a learning curve for the developers, just if it's approval. And now it's not preliminary, now not final, it's just now approval. Yes, so.
Yeah, there's gonna be a little bit of a train wreck there, because I have a hard time thinking these water districts are gonna want to give a final approval, and then we get the plans and start changing things. Maybe we say, hey, you didn't meet your frontage requirement, start moving the subdivision around. Now it's a different subdivision than they gave final approval on. And we've had that happen in the past and be a problem, but where we only get one shot at it, it's gonna be pretty hard to get a final approval letter issued by these other entities.
Would that possibly be fixed? Because there's four cycles in the review thing, so maybe upfront, they come in and they say they have this, you guys look at it and say, no, that's not gonna work. So as long as we let them know by that fourth cycle, that they have that one now?
So if we change something like in the layout, we'd have to send it back to Hooper Water and Hooper Irrigation and say, this is changed, then you'll have to issue a new letter for the round number two, or?
That's what I think, I, I don't think that's.
Yeah, I think that's correct, and you could also just make the applicant do it, so you could say, because the way the review cycles work, um, I just dropped over there, my address. So once you have all the things wrong with the subdivision, like, you know, there's not enough frontage, if that's your main thing, then you would just make a list and you'd say you have to fix the frontage, and then you need to get like a revised, updated, final approval letter from the, you know, water provider, and then do X, Y, Z other things, and then you resubmit, and then at that point, you can approve it if it's good or not. You could just repeat the process up to three times. So to, yeah, just to be clear, a complete application doesn't mean a perfect application. So that's why we have the review cycles, and so ideally, you'll be able. And so ideally you'll be able to polish a lot of things in those cycles, though like, uh, I think has been mentioned. It is a lot more costly for the developer to just jump in and have a complete application rather than easing into it with like a preliminary. But that's just kinda how the state has tied our hands, and so I think the answer to a developer is. Please take advantage of the pre-application meetings, go to that conference. And use that essentially as your preliminary application, you won't be able to force your way through with these city review deadlines. But you'll be able to get hopefully all the feedback that you need, so hopefully any decision about like frontage is resolved in the uh conference beforehand.
Is, are they only able to have one of those pre-application meetings, or can they have multiple? Can we control how many there are, or?
Yeah, I mean you can, um, I think the state code requires that you provide at least one, but there's no reason you couldn't do more.
Cause I, I saw in your first slide though, it is voluntary on their side, if they don't want to have one, they can just apply.
Yeah, that's right.
Good, they take the chance of after the fourth cycle going, you still haven't done your stuff, so it's not, you're.
Yeah.
Do we charge them the time we do wanna do?
Your application is deannaled, so it'd be their benefit to do the concept.
Pre-concept. I think what is it, three, two, three, two hundred?
But is this, wouldn't this be like, take the place of, cause there only, there won't be like a pre-concept and a concept now, or?
Well, they may still come in for a pre-concept, cause sometimes it's just we have this idea, but we're really not ready to even apply. Then some of those, you know, that you've been to, there've been actually a concept where we invite all those other entities, those are the ones we charge. Sometimes the pre-concepts only like, they'll come and maybe meet with Jared and Malcolm and Darren and say, hey, is sewer even available in this area? And then Darren says, no, it's not, well, we didn't charge him, and then they go back to the drawing board, but by the time it's a concept and we charge them, that's when all the entities, so.
So how does that work where it says the city has fifteen business days to schedule after they request? I just wanna make sure we're not in trouble.
That would be a concept, conference, not a pre, I mean, it's a, yeah, that, I, I think that's the two differences.
It's that, are we gonna be okay with the state with that? Like what, I just wanna make sure that like Hooker's delineation of that doesn't conflict with what the state's telling us.
So that's, so that's separate from the actual review process, so it's just if somebody sends you an email saying, I want a pre-application meeting. You have fifteen days to just schedule that meeting, to get it on the calendar.
And that's different than if they just come in and wanna sit down with people here at the city and find out, or is that looked at the same way, if they request it or not?
They're, they're, they're different.
I would think they're different, but.
Once they made their fee, then the clocks start.
Yeah.
Uh, a concept conference is part of the process and formally review, a pre-concept, which is, we don't even have to demon anything anymore, that's just them kicking. Poking tires and coming in, kicking around, it's not, there's no requirements.
I just, yeah.
Stop meeting, right.
Yeah, if they wanna be on a timeline, they'll have to formally request the concept conference and.
Okay.
We'll then do it, but if they wanna come in and talk, they can, but it's just that our, you know, willingness to help them out.
And Jacob might be able to answer this, but possibly, have you developed forms for other entities for the pre-application meeting? That way Hooker will recognize it's actually a pre-application meeting and not just a, hey, is there sewer, or hey, is there, you know?
So we'll just have to start instead of calling the concept conference, calling our pre-application meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel that the more information we can give for that, the better feedback we can give them to have a complete application.
Yeah, so I think it's totally reasonable, if someone just sends you one off, you know, text message and is wondering about, you know, what the requirements for X, Y, Z are. That's not a pre-application meeting or a concept conference, as I think your code calls it, so. I think the only way that they could hold you to that requirement of is this put on the calendar within fifteen days. And then uh forty-five days, it's actually helpful, I think is what we put in your code. The only way they could hold you to that is if they actually say, I want my. You know, pre-application meeting, you know, like, I want my phone call, basically.
Yeah, one more fine to continue to do it our way of, if they asked for one, we'll say, yeah, no problem, fill out this application, right?
Pay you money.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Or we'll just use our applications.
Yeah, I think if they're educated upfront, I just always worry that they're gonna come in and say, hey, I requested this, and now it's been forty days and so.
We'll just make sure they know they have to fill out an application too. Start one, and so we'll just keep using our application.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, can we go back to that notification part and then keep moving on? I might, I wanna still, oh yeah, go ahead.
Can I point something out on that last slide? Can you go back one slide? It's interesting when you get to the third cycle, planning commission approves revised application of compliant. We have twenty days to approve or deny it after the fourth review cycle, then what's interesting is number four. Applicant has almost, they actually, they do, they have a year to record the plot with the county. Like, we're under this gun for fifteen and twenty days, and then all of a sudden the applicant has an entire year to say, ah. I'm good now, I don't take much time to record it, and you know, it's like, really? Why are we under the gun to do this and then the developer has all that time?
We can change. Recording, yeah. Sorry, we can change the recording deadline, that's just what I think you guys had before, or what we threw in there initially as like something to go off of. Some cities make it thirty days, some cities, uh, you know, obviously like a year or even two, the idea is that. You wanna give applicants an opportunity to like either complete the improvements, if there's any like public improvements that are required. Or uh guarantee for them, so there just be some window to do that, but it doesn't have to be long, you know, like, so if you wanna chop that down, we absolutely can.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna say, the tricky part about that deadline, it seems long, but if they don't ask for all full improvements, that's a year to get it built. So that they can record it, so that's not really unreasonable, but it depends how they do their guarantee for the project.
And currently we have our city recorder's the one that records the plots, we don't send them in with the applicants.
Yeah, that's a, so I think in practice that's fine. Um, the state law, the like, the language technically says that the applicant needs to record and the city needs to ensure that it is recorded. So, I mean, it's not super clear, I think the idea was that the applicant is gonna record, but I think if you had the city do it, then you could just say that this. The applicant's gonna record through the city, you know, so that's why we wrote it the way that we did, but we can change it up.
Well, if it helps, we have had one in the past, they recorded something different than we approved. And I think that's why the city gets them recorded now, as far as the policy sits currently.
Yeah, that's fair. Uh, we'll add some, we can change that language where the applicant submits it to the recorder.
If it's okay, can I confirm um the final in approval letter, is that the direction that everybody wanted?
Say that again, sorry.
The fi, the approval letters adding final, I just wanna make sure.
For, for the utility companies, the different, yeah, that, we need a final will serve letter, a final, is that what you call it? Final approval letter?
Final.
Final.
Right now, just like saying, yeah.
That seems like at one time our final was when everybody's signature was on the mylar.
Yeah.
You know, that was, that was the final final when it was recorded and every entity had a signature on it. You know, it's like, is that even gonna come into play anymore?
Okay, I'll try to place on here that they said, there is, yeah, I found, it was in the, just towards the end. In the final plot documentation submission section, yeah, the. Let's see, I think it's on H, towards the back. Where it says other chapters of this title notwithstanding, the land use authority shall approve or deny subdivision application under the chapter. After reviewing a complete subdivision application as described in this section, the singular application. And review process includes the combined elements of traditional preliminary and final applications. As those terms are used, and then it gives the codes. And then it says this chapter describes a preliminary review and approval with final approval happening automatically when the plot is recorded. Is that the, what you're talking about?
It's only recorded after everybody signs off on it.
Yeah, so that's consistent with what we've done.
Okay, next.
No, that was, that was, that was a good guess, though, I mean, that was, that's a long time.
Yeah. Just probably waiting for us to.
But like Jared said, sometimes we need that, most time, depending on what they're doing with that, with the infrastructure.
If they gotta build it, yeah.
Yeah.
Madison, where did you update for final approval? Who was that at, what page? Final approval letter, final uh.
Uh.
Availability or whatever we're turning it on page, what?
I just saw.
So three hundred and sixty-six days goes by and it's not recorded, then what? They start over again?
That's a good question.
I think it says it expires.
Yeah, you were sharing.
Is it on number three, Malcolm, three, and then it goes to?
Forty, page forty-three, I think.
Oh, I don't have my pages, I'm just, I really printed it. It is under number four, letters of approval from Hooker Water and all of that.
Yep.
Did you say it's voided, Jacob? After three sixty?
Yeah, so it, yeah, I, I believe that we wrote it down, I can actually pull it up. But it should say that if it isn't recorded within that timeline, then the plot is voided, so we have to start over.
From the very last page of what we got, and I think, I, I feel like it would be a good idea to add in there. That it's voided along with the pre-existing ordinances that were in place when it was approved and uh applied for, and it will be, if re-applied for it, subject to the current ordinances at that time. Uh, when we were talking to Brent Bateman, is that his name, Brent Bateman?
Mm-hmm.
He talked about a place up in Park City that had, uh, they'd applied for something twenty years previous. And then they sat on it for a while, and when they reapplied, they were vested. Because they had applied at that time, and so they got to go back off of the ordinances at the time they'd applied twenty years prior. And I think we don't wanna get ourselves in trouble down the road if somebody sits on it and they say, well, we applied back then, so technically by law we're vested. Unless our ordinance says they're not.
But, but don't, can we?
Yeah, we're gonna add that uh anti-vesting.
We, we can't add that, can we do, can the city do that? Cause that would be important.
I think we can, for what he said, he told us to.
Brent told us we can, it just has to be by ordinance that you lose your vesting if your application expires.
But you said we do the recording, alright, so then.
But.
Well, but they're saying like if they apply for something.
They don't perform and then perform.
Like kinda what happened with the one subdivision over off of fifty-nine hundred. We don't wanna be in a situation where they can say, well, you're gonna, we're holding you to what it was when we applied five years ago or something. But I think, I feel like this is up to the city council, but that ordinance should be in place. Before all, or at least at the same time that all of this happens if we can, because. Ah, this is just all different, I don't know, that's just my thoughts, but.
Not because things change, that's, that's what happens.
We've talked about that too, though, Amanda's staff, that we felt like there should be an expiration for subdivisions, we've talked about that exact thing. Cause it can come back ten years later, like you mentioned, Park City twenty years later, and our ordinance doesn't state that, so I think you're right, we need to get that in place.
Yeah, the weird thing, we have a lot of, all these expiration dicks, and they really don't mean anything right now, because they're still vested under the old rules, so. They go through the application process again, but we end up right back where we were.
Well, I think this, cause I mean on the surface, it seems like this is taking. Authority away from the city council, and you guys are the elected people that make these decisions and putting it on the planning commission, but. You guys make the ordinances, so if you come up with all the ordinances that you want, I think the planning commission just makes sure those ordinances are being adhered to, but. I just think it's super important we go through stuff and make sure there's nothing that we're not catching. Before this goes in, and I know it's like breathing down our neck already, but.
Malcolm.
We can add that, Jacob, the subject, uh, subject existing, we have current ordinance.
Yeah, definitely.
So that would eliminate the, the vesting part of it, so that's what we're trying to do is, is when that cut off, after three, three hundred and sixty-six days, they don't have a vesting right anymore. So I don't know how we make that clear, if we, we just put it like that, or?
Would you need a separate ordinance to do that?
Well, Brent Bateman made it sound like we did.
Maybe you could put it in both.
Sorry, I, I, I'm, I'm probably on a chip with your city attorney, I don't know, I can't remember who she is in the room. But my understanding is that if it's a new application, you lose the vesting because it's, it may be for like the same project.
Yeah, we.
But it's like vesting follows the application, so I think by default. You're fine if you just say you have to restart the application, and then they have to comply with all existing ordinances at the time they start the application. But just to be double clear, we can add language, not just at this last part where it says they have to record or else they have to reapply. But also there are a couple places earlier, like a, a page back, I think in the ordinance where it says that. Um, if they don't uh apply, like they don't basically submit their revisions after a review cycle within a certain number of days. They also have to reapply and then that would also reset it, um, or you know, if application expires, half way through basically. We'll add that language throughout just to be, be sure.
It can't be clear enough, that, that's what I think they're saying, that vesting part, we were faced with that, and. It can't, somehow, that has to be just clear, that. They're not just, because things might change after a year, maybe, you know, maybe the, examples of it.
Well, we have examples.
Might be ten years, yeah, might be ten years.
So why, so why didn't the ones that we have just imply that everything expired after a certain number of years, you know, like we just said?
Yeah, well.
But because we didn't have a time limit in place, you know, this says three sixty-five days, we don't think we ever had a time limit.
Uh, my understanding was on those development agreements, they expired after two years and we have the option to extend them, but from what. Brett, Brent, Brent Bateman told us, it doesn't matter.
Brent.
You have to go off of the time when that development, development agreement was signed, and they are vested. On the date that they sign that development agreement, even if it expires.
I think, I think it's actually when they, when we accept the complete application is when your vesting is needed up.
Like.
And it's usually because in a development agreement, one of the addendums is always a copy of the code at that time, and that, I think that's specific to development agreements. But I think it's safe to incorporate in other places in your code, but DA specifically always have a copy of that code. So ten years, when you pull it out, you're gonna find that ten-year-old copy of that code, and that's why.
So is the development agreement, this is where I'm not educated, is that, oh, there's a lot of places, but this is one of them, is, do we still have them do development agreement?
I think we're getting away from development agreements now.
Yeah, so this is our.
They'll probably only do them in abnormal situations.
Yeah, unless it's something weird that we wanna negotiate something.
So they're on the table still, if you, we want one.
Well, I think if we're covered in this and in our ordinance, that would be important, so.
Yeah, so development agreements are technically still permitted, but you can't require them of developers. So like, uh, unless there's like a really crazy situation, but you'd have to like write that in, in your ordinance. So if a developer comes to you and is like, I don't, I don't understand these review cycles, and I wanna do something different anyway with mixed in, like, you know, mixed use and zoning changes and stuff. The, the city council can absolutely just negotiate and enter into that development agreement, and you don't even have to touch any of this.
Only at the request of the developer.
Yeah, we can't require them.
Yeah, historically we've used development agreements to enforce our ordinances, and they're really used everywhere else to. Tackle situations where the city might want something to negotiate with the developer and they get a little more density or something. In lieu of what the city wants and kind of negotiate abnormal subdivisions.
Community pool, et cetera.
So if we don't have a development agreement anymore, this is gonna be our protection, as far as this and the ordinance, right, saying that we, they're not vested?
Yeah.
Is that?
That, you know, and I just, I'm still not real comfortable thinking that, let's just say after three hundred and sixty-five days, now there's. A general plan's been opened, and now the, the frontage requirement is twenty-five feet wider, or it could be twenty-five feet narrower. Are, do they have to follow that new ordinance, or are they vested with what they originally applied for? That, that's where I'm, I still have a question.
So you're, you're gonna add some?
Yeah, I'm, right, Jacob?
Yeah, totally, so I don't think they're vested with your current ordinance, if it expires and they have to resubmit an application. Like a new application, then it's gonna go based off of whatever the ordinances are when they resubmit the application.
Okay, well.
So we'll make sure that, you know, we write this in there, if we have the general plan changes and then they don't record on time, they have to incorporate those changes. Now, they are vested however, if they submit a, an application and then you give them feedback, and then they resubmit it and it hasn't expired yet. And so that's when you, when you're going through those four review cycles until they get a final decision, yes or no, then they are vested, and so one thing that.
Oh, okay, that, that makes sense.
But there's not vested, obviously not vested with incomplete applications, only a complete application through the review cycle.
It, it's all behind me.
No, we do have a review.
That's right, that's right.
There you go.
Absolutely, that's right.
Yeah, that's, works. That worked great, but just to clarify, just for the city, they're saying, we're, we're, we're gonna add just some verbiage in here, maybe a specific clause that says. You know, applications and voided applications are, you know, or uh rejected applications and voided applications are subject to existing current. you know, applications and voided applications are, you know, or, uh, rejected applications and voided applications are subject to existing current ordinance or whatever, you wanna?
Yes, yes, definitely, we'll add that. And then one other thing I wanna ask, and someone who has the draft up in front of them, maybe they can tell me that we already put this in there. But there should be a section, like a paragraph below the flow chart, where it says something along the lines of, if an applicant takes longer than a hundred and eighty days to get back to what their revisions they've requested, then their application expires. If that isn't in there, would you like us to have it?
Yeah, I want that, I check, right, well.
It's mapping over the flow chart.
It's on page forty-six, it's in, for those that don't have page numbers, it's ten eight twelve review under D, section B, number four, if an applicant takes longer than a hundred and eighty days.
That's great, that would become, you know, subject, can you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll change it there too.
Can, can, uh, they request an extension like they can now? If they get to three hundred and sixty days and know they're close but not quite there, can they come to the commission and request an extension?
Yeah, we can make that happen.
I don't know if they want to, I'm just asking the question, cause we do let them now.
Question is, has it worked?
Not real well, cause we don't have any teeth, it's just a.
Not real, it's just, it just seems like they just kept rolling it over and rolling it on.
But if they lose their vesting, that'll be big teeth.
Yeah.
Cause they may have their subdivision half built, and now all that infrastructure's gotta get redone.
Yeah, well, that's.
Tear it all, redo.
That's what we were hoping with that, pipe was in the wrong place, leaked.
Can we go back to your slideshow, and sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand the note, the note of, the, the nuts and bolts, the notification piece. So we receive a complete application, it has all of those final availability or, you know, uh, will serve letters, whoever phrasing them.
Yeah.
And then a notification needs to happen at the staff level, what does that look like, sorry?
Yeah, so, um, basically, the only one that's technically in your code that's required is you have to notify the water conveyance facility owners, and so if there's some language, there should be a section about notifying affected entities. And it basically says you have to just look up who these are, basically, it would probably be involved in, um, your irrigation company, just get from call, they'll probably point you in the right direction. You just gotta let them know within fifteen days. That's just to give them an opportunity to comment on the application before you approve it. And then I believe in your code, it also requires, uh, notification of the DRC, basically, step, well, even if it's not in your code, just as practice, so that everyone can provide comments and start reviewing it, someone's gonna have to take the application and send it, and email that everyone.
The water conveyance facility owners, we're gonna identify with the help of the irrigation company, but these are quite literally landowners, homeowners. They just need to be aware that a complete application has been accepted, and it's now on a fifteen-day approval timeframe, okay?
Yeah, so there, you know, there should be, uh, in addition to the irrigation company, there's like this state database of all, uh, all of these canals, they're supposed to be registered. And so it's like, yeah, like you said, uh, could be homeowners, definitely landowners, like if there's, I don't know, you have that some agricultural thing on one lot, and there's an easement going through the, the lot to be subdivided, and there's like water going through that or a ditch of some sort, then that would be like the prime candidates, you gotta figure out who owns that easement, and, and then you have to.
Where does it, where does it, where does it explicitly state that in chapter eight, the notification requirement?
Uh, ten eight eleven, I think, is what you're referring to.
What page is it?
Page forty-five.
Page forty-five. Ten eight eleven.
So in, in out here, there's a lot of irrigation ditches that might run and serve several people, maybe not right adjacent to a parcel, but it might go down and be ten users, we need to notify all of the people?
Whoever the owners are, so I'm assuming if it serves multiple people, all have some sort of interest in the ownership of it. But I think that's where you'll wanna ask the irrigation company and/or consult the state's database, cause everyone should be listed on there, you need to contact.
I wonder if there's a slew, out here in Hooper, we have slews, and those are governed under federal, so what can you do with that?
So the, the slews are some big major drainage, open drainage channels, but are really under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. And they can divert some of that authority to the state, and then the county, and then the municipality they're in, so. I don't, is, is that another thing we need to inform all of those entities about?
That, that might actually be covered in the definition of water conveyance facility, cause it's not only ditches and canals, well, I'm it's, it's a little broader than that, so I think we added the definition, um, either at the beginning of chapter eight or elsewhere. But either way, I mean, that's something you should, yeah, I, I would just ask practice, even if it's not required by the state, I would be notifying those people too. Just to make sure it's preserved as well, because the, I think the real issue is that you end up with a property dispute if you ignore an easement or some form of getting water somewhere, and then you just like permit a subdivision, they build a house in the middle of it. And then you have the property owners who are serviced by the canal or the, and whatever else, who then would have to s- sue the landowner, but the subdivision and the city would potentially get involved, and definitely look bad, cause they approved it. So to avoid all of that, you just have to make sure that at least people are getting out fighting.
So, so part of this might be conveyed by a company ditch, but then, before it gets, it might go through a subdivision, and it'll be a private ditch to several people. So who, who would notify those private?
Sounds like we need to notify everybody downstream of that.
From beginning to end, that, and that would be, that would be good.
So I'll make sure to send you, um, there's some other language in the state code about how, where you're supposed, where the city is supposed to check, but to make sure that it got everyone. Like I mentioned, there's a database the state has, and I think there's one or two other sources you can use instead of that database. So if it isn't in your ordinance already, we can just give it to you like informally, we could put it in the ordinance, but in the end, we can just let you know about it, so it's on hand.
Well, real quick, sorry, I spaced out.
It's your job, we just said we're gonna make now.
It said, uh, hey, it says here we gotta notify anyone with one, within one hundred feet of the subdivision plat. You guys wanting to make us notify people more than that? You want me to notify more people?
So, so, so I guess my point is, you may develop this twenty acres, but there might be ten farmers that its water goes through the middle of it.
I don't wanna notify people, I just made.
Yeah.
Everybody downstream need to be.
That's the challenge right there.
Well, I don't mind notifying them on goodwill, I would like to, but I don't wanna put it in our code that they can come back and say, I didn't notify them. And I only wanna do what is, why'd you say, why'd you pick one hundred feet?
Yeah, so that's just what the state says, and I want to.
That's all I wanna do is to read it. I don't wanna be held liable to.
I'm, I'm.
I don't wanna be held liable to.
I don't teach her to go to the door.
Yeah, I'm gonna be wrong, I hope, but I don't mess anyone up, but I don't wanna be liable to them, they come in front of me. I notified everyone they told me had to.
I did find everybody that owns water downstream with them, yeah.
But I don't know, am I wrong in understanding, you guys tell me, we can notify more, I don't care.
I think there are two ways to read this.
I, I would think everyone that gets served with that ditch should be notified. If, if, uh, cause some of my, it might be their livelihood, you know?
That's tricky too.
If we do have a farmer here, that's valid point, that's valid.
Some guys out there that don't have any water in that ditch, and all of a sudden they put water in that ditch, and it's really not theirs. Yeah, I was just saying, that's easy to say and hard to do out here, but. Yeah, so I, I stay with the hunter.
Me too.
So mainly, it's gonna be the irrigation company, then we put the burden back on them, say, hey, if, if we zigzag through there with the pipe, you better tell everybody downstream that this is gonna be their new manhole for their new headgate.
What do we do right now? Like if there's people that use the water that are affected when we put a subdivision in, do we notify everybody that uses that water, or what do we do right now?
We address them, and they're supposed to bring that, they're, they, we put the burden on the developer to bring back approval, that type of.
After having met with, like, an irrigation company.
Can we do that? Can we have that be one of our requirements for a complete application?
Yeah, I think maybe they're irrigation company, you know, they have.
That the developer has to make sure all of those people have been contacted, so it's on them instead of us.
Cause they have a director that's assigned to every branch, uh, where the water.
Well, they would know too, they'd have the information, have your contact, whether we try to find it. Yeah, if it's developer led, that's great.
It should be covered, right, under the letter of approval, because they have to get the letter.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, yeah, if they have a letter of approval from them, in theory, they've already notified them.
Notified, and when I look at the Division of Water Rights map, it looks like Wilson Irrigation Company, which I'm not sure if it's within city limits, I've gotta pull the city limits.
Yeah.
It is, it, that, it's that and Hooper, and that's it, that, those are the only two.
What, the Water Conservancy has a couple of things on the east side.
When we get a final approval letter from the irrigation company, I thought that was just saying, okay, we have the water and we have a way to provide it. But I didn't need that map, that they had notified all those ditch users, that they could be affected by where this is gonna be going in.
Well, there was a time when the irrigation company got, had a set of plans, you know, that, that, we were looking at the same plans there, or they looked at them there, the same ones that you're looking at here.
Yeah.
So if there were private ditch owners, they, they were taken care of, you know, they, they were aware of the ditches.
Do we still do that?
Well, to get, to get these letters.
I don't know how thorough, but you know that it is on that end, but yeah, we try to.
Yeah.
Cause I felt if they see the same plans, then why not just have that, uh, whether we have to require in those final approval letters that they've notified those ditch users or whatever that could be affected, just so it's not our issue.
Yeah, it's a good idea, just does the state code require us to do the notification, or can we just, they just have to be notified?
It does say facility owner though, which, terminology could be, yeah, super irrigation, not each private owner.
Yeah.
If we can go.
Yeah, that's what I think too.
Yeah, just.
But then maybe we can communicate with the irrigation?
So now they can let super irrigation, now they can let.
Yeah, you communicate with the irrigation and then now.
But part of this approval letter needs to include notifying all those people that are affected.
Notifying. That sounds more reasonable for us.
I think, I think so too. Cause they're gonna know who those ditch users are more than we are.
I just, I just think of the example, Morning Meadows out there, yeah, they, irrigation company, you know, they delivered the water to where their headgate was, but everybody downstream from that was affected, because they rerouted their private ditches, and that didn't deliver the water to them like it used to. And I, I just wish there was a way to resolve something like that from happening again. Cause up front, it could have been.
Well, can you just put in the verbiage that it has to maintain the same type of service or ma- same quality of service as, kinda like if you get an automobile accident, it's restored to its original condition as best you can, so. If they impede on those ditches, they have to bring them back as good or better than they left them. I don't know if we put something like that.
Yeah.
I asked, if we had them to tell whoever had the bad doors, because we had a lawsuit. See, and he didn't have a subdivision, so that one was a little different, and if it was a subdivision, we'd add more teeth, but he hadn't exist, he just bought an existing parcel, so he was, all he had to do is get a building permit, so that was a whole different ballgame than if it was a subdivision. He had to reroute and that. Yeah, but we just left it up to them, cause it really wasn't a city issue, cause he didn't subdivide.
Well, I would say we notify Hooper Irrigation, and like you said, the others, the directors on all the different lines, and let them let Hooper Irrigation give that to the direct, and let them be responsible, I don't think that's something Malcolm should have to be, cause we're putting it off onto Malcolm
Fine.
or any of us trying to find out who all those owners of that land is, has, because it might not, like you said, it might not even be the same people that are keeping the water.
Well, I don't.
Oh, and then if needed, they can withhold their will serve letter until they get verification, everybody's gonna be supplied adequately.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's their teeth, is the will serve letter.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
They either give it or they don't, depend on how they feel about the project.
I think we just need to convey our expectation to them that they notify, we're letting you know this is happening.
Right.
Your, your obligations to let the people know, so that that's clear that they, cause it, cause when you read facility owner, I could see Hooper Irrigation say, we don't own that ditch, it's a private ditch.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can at least let the, uh, they have one main theme that it comes off of, right, so.
Right.
As long as they, I don't know.
We, we've been down this road, you know, if there's any problems, then well, it's not our ditch, it's the private landowner, so then the private landowners, who should have been notified as the facility owner, but I think we put that burden on them.
Sounds like, by state law, Jacob, well, the city staff, someone will have to notify within one hundred feet, and then we'll also take an extra step. We can write it up, but we want to know that we'll notify the irrigation company of.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, in practice, they could.
So that they can take it further.
Sure, and they'll know, the irrigation company will know who's on the.
Well, and if we specify that in order for them to provide that final approval letter, they have to let all of the ditch users that are affected be made aware. And that's our, if we let them know that, and then that letter comes in, we're gonna assume they've done their job, and then we've done our due diligence, like.
I mean, that's the best we can do right there.
Yeah.
So does that have, do you have to put that in here, or is that just something we do within the city, like, how we make sure that happens?
You gotta know to drive it out.
Yeah, I think the hundred feet will be in here, and maybe with notification, I don't know, Madison, is that something we should add in our language, with notification to, you know?
It's just, it's kinda hard, we're trying to control someone else's process, right, and we can't be, right, I mean, we can do the hundred feet, and we will, but we will notify them, we can tell them, hey, it's part of your final approval, we're anticipating that you've, and, you know, checked into it. And then additionally, when we notify, when we notify the entities, we're hoping, but, I don't know, it's, it's hard to make them do it.
It's sort of a good faith, leadership to leadership, I think, I don't know if it would be documented in the actual ordinance.
What about on the checklist that we're gonna give them in the beginning, saying this is what you need for a complete package, and one of those themes, if it says a final serve letter from Hooper Irrigation or Wilson Irrigation, stating that they've notified, dah 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 dah, and then if they take it to them, they're private companies, and if Hooper Irrigation says, okay, you're asking me to do more work, in order for us to do this, we're gonna have to charge you this much money, because it's gonna take our time to notify these people.
Are you saying like almost providing a form for the applicant to then take to the irrigation company, and having that form, or, or the form letter, excuse me, be sort of like pre-filled with the request that we're, that the city would be making of the irrigation company?
I don't know if we would wanna provide the form letter, but maybe just on the checklist saying you're gonna need a final approval letter from Hooper Irrigation, and that letter's gonna need to say that the water is there, but we also, and we've also notified the ditch users that will be affected.
Which includes.
Yeah.
And that way, they can let Hooper Irrigation know that that's what they need, and if Hooper Irrigation says, okay, but this is gonna cost us a little bit more time, so you're, there's a hundred dollar fee for us to use or something, that way it's in their court, and we're not telling them how to run their business, but the developer needs it in order for us to do what we need to do.
That in tandem, right, with leadership asking, or meeting with irrigation company to make that ask, I think that would be helpful. So it's coming from both sides, or it's, it's coming from the city and from the applicant, so you're kind of attacking it from both sides?
In my mind, it's more than just a notification, but you're, you're not only notifying, but you're providing the service still after the project is completed.
Well, we could, we've been, yeah, we've been. Exact, that's just what we went through, see, we had a developer go in and change, what, a ditch that just worked fine, and it was just a dirt ditch, and but it delivered all, all the water that those downstream were entitled to. Developer comes in and pipes it, after he gets it all piped, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't deliver the water downstream. But it's a private ditch, see, so who, who holds the developer's feet to the fire to make sure that gets done?
Does our engineering take that into account when we, we look at what they brought in, and they say, if you do this, you're gonna affect these different water users, so that has to be fixed?
Well, it, it gets into a whole bunch of legalities, and we, we reviewed it, but we didn't approve it and re-engineer it, so then it goes back to the design engineer, who in this case said, no, it works just fine, and we're like, no, it doesn't, and it just turned into a big legal mess, but.
Maybe we just need more clarification from the state as to what they count as a facility owner. Like maybe we're rehashing this more than we need to, maybe they only mean it's to the Hooper Irrigation company and the hundred feet, and that's our obligation. So maybe we actually need to find. So maybe we actually need to find out what the state is meaning when they say facility owner.
But, but if, and I'm just trying to understand, if you have somebody that is using that water to water their crops or whatever it is, don't we as a city who's approving this subdivision have some sort of accountability or responsibility to make sure we're not letting this developer come in and do something that's gonna cause negative repercussions for that landowner, like even if it is a private ditch that they're using?
I, I was told no, even by our lawyers, because we had this exact thing come up, and they called, and I asked our lawyers, and they said, it's a private irrigation ditch, so.
So what project was that, that you're talking about that, yeah, was asking about? Is there a project in particular you're?
Oh, it was about a, a, an individual, and I think might be the same one, they, it was a existing lot, but it was a new home.
Is that the one that's just over here, fifty five? But wouldn't that be different, cause that was, that's not a subdivision that was coming in, they applied for conditional use permit, right, so it was a civil.
No, but it really would, yeah, it really would matter though, if it was a subdivision or a single lot, it was still a matter, they said they weren't getting their water. But our attorney said, once it is in a private ditch, it's, it's nothing to do with a city, so their lawyer, you know, our lawyer talked to their lawyer and they, they figured out.
So if they come in and they grade it wrong or something like that, I, I'm not, I don't understand how all of that stuff works, but if we end up flooding surrounding homes
Yeah.
because of what's happened, didn't we have a lawsuit that came against us because of that?
Grading's, I think, different than if, when it is an irrigation.
So in, in any project, the subdivision would be in here to have an engineer of records, and he's ultimately responsible that it actually works at the end of the day. Our engineer reviews it and says, yes, looks good with what our ordinance is, and, but he doesn't re-engineer the whole project to say, hey, your pipeline's two inches too small or something like that, ultimately, it's their responsibility, whoever's stamp is on those plans, to make sure that it actually works.
Well, I feel like there's two separate things here, we're going to notify them, which will then, you know, they have twenty days, they can't approve it without giving some type of, you know, and that gives the owner of the conveyance to, you know, bring up alerts, specify that we need this done, and then that takes them to, and then there's also the second part, that, so that gives them that opportunity, but then the second part is separate in terms of, you know, if it doesn't operate correctly, that would be on the backend, I don't think that we can ever anticipate it, so I don't think that we, anyways, I just don't think there's anything we really do for the backend, per se.
I just don't wanna be liable for something where it ends up costing us money down the road. And that kinda brings in one of the other things I was gonna bring up, as far as it says that we can have one public hearing, um. So is that, that would be an opportunity if these ditch users have been notified, where they can come in and say, we have concerns about what's going on here? And I think if that's the case, we wanna be strategic about when we have that public hearing, so that there's a opportunity to remedy a problem that they might have.
Sure.
And where it says, you know, you can have one, but no more than one, does the law say we cannot have more than one? That's what it says.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I said, I'm in the council's hands now.
So I, I do think that with the water conveyance notification question, it can be helpful, and I'll make sure to put this in either the next draft or in a, like, internal kinda memo that the staff can look at, but, um, it can be helpful to look at the database that the state has, cause what the code says is that you're supposed to notify these owners, and then to figure out who to notify, there's three sources you can look at. So I think if we take a look at those sources, it'll clear, clear up the question of how big of a burden this is gonna be to notify everyone.
So are, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, or do you have more presentation to do, or are we able to answer, like, ask some questions about stuff, or?
No, basically, I'm basically done, so, I mean, uh, you saw the other thing, um.
Do you want to go back to this, or go back to the last?
Well, and then, yeah, I kept this as, as the very end, but then, that's it, I kept it simple, so I can just, uh.
Quick, please, uh, do this, as well, man, it sounds like we'll have questions, you got the questions, would be great. It'd be just great.
Yeah, please stay on this one, maybe they have questions on this one.
Go ahead, Jacob.
Sorry, is everyone waiting on me?
Yeah.
Sorry, what did you say, Malcolm?
Uh, just proceed with your presentation, that, that would just enlighten us.
Oh. Well, I'll try to, you know, enlighten more than I already have tonight.
Yeah.
So I guess the one other thing I'll point out, cause we've discussed this review cycle process, the one hearing you can have total in the four cycles, and then, uh, there's basically just a random card out here, if the applicant drags their feet, you get an extra twenty days, or business days, in your next cycle. And then someone mentioned this twenty day deadline for the, for the final, for the actual approval. What this means basically is that you're not stuck in the review, you don't have to approve it before the end of the last review cycle. Because at the end of your part of the last review cycle, you might request revisions, and then the applicant would resubmit for, I guess, the fifth time, their complete application, and then at that point, you go over here, and then the land use authority has twenty business days to think about it before they give it a final guess or final though.
So the part down where it says if the applicant takes more than forty business days, the city gets twenty more business days to review and respond, our packet that we printed out says if the applicant takes more than twenty business days, the city gets twenty more business days to review and respond, which is correct?
Yeah, it's the forty days, I mean, it can be the twenty days, but the state actually updated it to forty this spring, and I guess it didn't make it into our draft, so I'll make sure to update that.
So I, I just wanna make sure I understand, when it says if the applicant takes more than forty business days, does that mean, once we respond to them in phase three, if they take more than forty days to get us back everything, at the time that they give it to us, we have twenty days? But what would it be if they got it to us before forty days, what would we have?
Then it would be fifteen, so if they, so basically you have like the forty business days is almost essentially, oh, it's basically two months. So if you say, please fix one, two, three things, X, Y, Z, and then they sit on it for three months, then you get this fifteen days that you would have had, plus an additional twenty business days.
Plus twenty, plus forty. Oh, wait, yeah, plus twenty, sorry, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so you have thirty five business days.
Okay. But if they get it to us before that, then we only have fifteen business days.
Yeah, then you're stuck to the fifteen business days for each cycle.
Okay.
I don't wanna convolute this too much, but what are we using for business days again?
I'm just gonna say.
It was, so it is defined by Utah Code, this was one of the ones we looked into, um, we cannot change it to working days, because Utah Code defines business days in Title fifty four Public Utilities and Title ten Utah Municipal Code, and they are all, um, a business day is a day that is not a Saturday, Sunday, or legal holiday, and that's defined in several sections of Utah Code.
Okay. Perfect.
So our Fridays, that you guys don't work.
These don't count.
They do.
Yeah.
We lose.
No, don't go there, play.
Well, no.
No, we're not working them. We're not working them. Coming in for them because of this.
I didn't, no, I just said, we, we lose that.
Yeah, we lose it.
Titans are time frame up.
Titan, yeah, Titan, you guys, Titan.
We had tried the working day, and it's been.
You should go, you should go to Monday and just do every other Friday.
I like that.
Are you volunteering to come in on every other Friday?
Yeah.
Help them out?
If I'm not.
So basically, Monday through Friday excluding holidays.
Yes.
Yep, okay, we can work with that, thanks.
And, and you said legal holidays, so like a federal holiday, not like.
Tomato days.
Well, tomato day's on Labor Day, so.
Well, it's more than one day.
I'm sure legal holidays.
We can't just come up with some holidays like Malcolm Smiling Day or something.
Or you, or you, Mexican holidays, cause they have one about every other week.
Avoiding the new day.
Yes.
National Donut Day or.
Okay, that answered my question, thanks. What else did you have for us, Jacob?
You bet, I, I think we can wrap this up, basically, the last thing is, I mean, the last slide doesn't really, doesn't really have any information, except just to say that it's really down here, this last circle is just when after approval, you gotta make sure everything is guaranteed or completed, or, I mean, I mean, the public improvements are guaranteed or completed, you gotta make sure it's recorded, and then this very last step, the city needs to, I, I notify the Utah G U Special Resource Center. Now, in practice, the county often does this, um, I don't know if you're, if you've been doing it, it's technically something that the state says the cities have to do.
I've never heard of that.
Basically, you just send like a copy of the plat.
It's in case, it's in case.
And, and, and it's added to the nine one one day rates.
Well, we, we're keeping the, the city reporter's plat though, aren't we? Not the applicant?
Yeah, that's right, we're gonna make that change, um, so that the applicants, and we basically, they post the guarantees, or they finish the improvements, and they give you the plat, or the city recorder the plat. And the city recorder records it, but then after that, a copy of the plat needs to be sent to the U G R C.
Is that, and again, just cause I don't understand this, but where right now it says the applicant reports, records the plat within three hundred and sixty five days, and if it's not recorded, then it becomes void. If we put that on the city, then, I mean, is that gonna mess with that at all or anything like that, as far as?
Would you just say that the applicant resubmits it to the city for, you know, actual recording within the three sixty five days?
Oh, okay.
And as long as they give it back to your report, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it's implied we're gonna record it quickly, this is just to protect us from lackadaisical applicants sometimes.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's all that I have, I don't wanna hold you on that, I, so after I, any questions, are you ready to fold?
Well, I'm gonna hold you.
Yeah, man.
You already knew that, but sorry.
That's not bad.
Um, I think on that first page where it talks about where any provision in this subdivision chapter conflicts with state laws, state law shall prevail, and where any provision in this subdivision chapter conflicts with other ordinances enacted by the city, the provisions in this subdivision chapter shall prevail. The only way that wouldn't, like, applies if conflicting ordinances not in this chapter came about as a result of amending the other ordinances we have. So I'm just concerned because what if we have things in our code that we don't want changed, that are now gonna be changed, because this is gonna take precedence? And just one small example, and the only reason this stood out to me is because we just looked at that fencing requirement for the land use separation fence, and, and I have everything. The wording in this is different than the wording in that, just slightly, but still it changes the meaning of what it is, so if you look.
Yeah. So the reason, the reason we put that in there is because you have your old ordinances for subdivisions that apply to all other subdivisions, and then this new chapter, and so they're both talking about how to review subdivisions, but we can just make it a little more clear that it's not gonna repeal your design standards or your zoning or any other thing like that, it's just gonna just guide the subdivision process for these types of applications.
So like where you have, where it talks about fences, it's item six A. Um, if you look at the ordinance where it reads, let's see, six foot chain link or other non-climbable separation fences between land uses, the city council may waive this requirement in a minor subdivision, or where the same entity owns the adjoining properties that have different land uses. Where the ordinance you guys just passed says the city council may waive the land use separation fence requirement under the following conditions, in a minor subdivision where the same entity owns all of the adjacent property with different land uses. So here it's saying or, so basically, if it's a minor subdivision, it doesn't matter if they own the other land, it doesn't, and it doesn't say that we require land use separation fence, you know, the waiver. It's just that the city council can approve, or they can waive that, which I think everybody wants to do the right thing, but down the road, you know, that's not really protecting those landowners that are adjacent to that, because you guys can waive it, but we don't have to have any kind of letter that they said that was okay.
Don't we have that?
We used to.
Is, is that gonna be the council now? Cause the council won't even see these if everything, unless they appeal it, does that need to be the commission can wait?
Well, it does depend, because we have now two processes for subdivisions, one if it's one to two family residential, and then one if it's everything else.
Okay.
So that would be a tricky part, and it's kind of just like, the, it's like, I guess, the curse of adding a new process without doing a total code rewrite, is that there might be some places like that where it references the city council when i- if it's, if it's, you know, gonna be reviewed and approved by, or for one to two family residential, then it would be the planning commission. So that's kind of another reason why we put in that conflict provision, to say that if, if there's a conflict, we're gonna make sure that we follow the state code. But that said, if you do find any of those references, and I can actually have my team go through and check your whole code, just to make sure that we are fixing any of those that we can find right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, is that there could be a lot of others that we're not seeing, cause this one was just barely done by the council, and so that's why it caught my attention. But I think the language that's in what you guys just did should be what's in this, eh, with the exception, I guess, now if it's the planning commission that has to make that final decision rather than the city council, that would need to be changed, but I think they put a lot of work into this, and I feel like it's more thorough than just this in here that would replace that, if that makes sense, that's just my thought.
Same language just goes to the commission.
It just goes to the commission and it replaces what is in here, and it's ten dash four, eight dash eighteen.
Yes, it took the land use authority, and that way, if it is one of them others, uh, commercial subdivision, then it would be the council. So would that be clear if you just put the land use authority and then whoever it applies to would have the ability?
Well, except for the, it says on here, this defines the land use authority as the planning commission, and we can delegate different responsibilities to other people, but I think it already takes care of it, like it says which subdivisions were over, so one to two family residential use, and then I thought it said some commercial, is it commercial in here, or did I imagine that? We don't have anything to do with commercial?
Well, the normal process, it just doesn't follow this process, you'll still have something to do with commercial, uh, commission, it'll just be.
But we don't make the final decision for commercial, right? It says subdivision includes, except as provided below, divisions of land for residential and non-residential uses, including land used, used or to be used for commercial, agricultural, and industrial purposes, so that's included in, uh, that's where I was confused, because it says it includes commercial, agricultural, and industrial.
Maybe I'm reading that as except.
Subdivision, let's see.
So subdivision includes, and then it's the first one, and then it says except, am I understanding that correctly, is that the same section?
See, except this provided below, divisions of land for residential and non-residential uses, including land used or to be used for commercial, agricultural, and industrial purposes. So I think it includes those, except for these things, when it says subdivision does not include, and then it has this list of things, but I didn't see anything on there about commercial.
Jacob, we have some new ordinances that we have updated this year, that we'll try to get those to you even tomorrow, so you'll be able to go through, because the one that Amanda was referring to is land use. Also, some of these at the beginning that talked about board of adjustments, we no longer do, we have a hearing officer instead, anyway, we'll get those to you, so.
Clear. Sounds good, yeah, we, we can work those in. And, yeah, we can clear, we can clear up this definition as well, like, see how that can be confusing.
You're talking about, right, the definition in ten eight six under subdivision includes?
Yeah, we can cut out the references to the commercial lag, industrial, et cetera.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
So what is our process for that then, that, they still come in and, like, exactly what happens now, they come in and request, and we we make a recommendation to you guys, and you guys are the land use authority on that?
I wanna go to you first, and then I can do this.
Um, let's see, okay, um. It referenced something in the, in that same section F under subdivision number five, where it says a bona fide division of land by deed or other instrument.
One second, sorry, man, where are you at?
Sorry.
Page thirty seven.
We're, just where we were looking at subdivision definitions, and it says subdivision does not include a bona fide division of land by deed or other instrument, if the deed or other instrument states in writing that the division is in anticipation of future land use approvals on the parcel or parcels, I think it's supposed to have a comma there, does not confer any land use approvals, and has not been approved by the land use authority. Uh, and I realize this is not considered a subdivision, but I'm just wondering, is that something people can do, where they can go in and divide their property without getting, they can subdivide it without getting the authorization of this city?
They're not subdividing it, they're either selling it or parking it off to family members, I guess.
And not, not subdividing it to build on.
Okay, I just want, cause I know we had a problem with that a couple of times, so.
There, there's been problems with that, you can, you can go, go subdivide off a ten foot by ten foot piece of ground, they go and record it, and then they come back to the city and say. There, there's been problems with that, you can, you can go, go subdivide off a ten-foot by a ten-foot piece of ground, they go and record it, and then they come back to the city and say, I wanna build a house on this.
I just wanted to make sure it's not like by some way saying, oh yeah, we're saying you can do that, and then come in.
It's kinda torturating, we did to their property, what, two years ago, they divided it into like five chunks, and, yeah.
I think we, we call it a non-development subdivision, where they're just dividing it for maybe inheritance or.
Well, and that's what that variance was that came in too, wasn't it? Something to do that, okay. So then, I don't know if we wanna do this right now, but I think we have to, on ten eight seven, like you were saying, some of these things have to be put in place before this, or it happened at the same time. Where it says the land use authority under this chapter, except for otherwise noted, is the planning commission. The land use authority is responsible for the following, but may delegate uh, any task to the technical review committee or other city staff. So I just went through each of these responsibilities, and put a note on who maybe we could delegate that to, but I don't know if that's something the planning commission needs to talk about in a separate session, or how do you? I know this is gonna take more than one meeting, 'cause it's such a big thing to get through, and I feel like we have to get it right, but I just didn't know, do you wanna go through those right now? We don't have all of our commission here, two of them. Well, Bryce is on the phone, I think. But, I think that has to involve everybody, we don't know what, like, so rendering a land use decision on all subdivision applications and petitions under this chapter, that would be the planning commission, 'cause we would make the final call, right? And then reviewing all applications under this chapter in an impartial manner, and according to the standards and deadlines described in this chapter. I thought that would fall more under the technical review committee, which if we are all okay with that, that would be the city planner, public works, the engineering, planning commission chair, or somebody attending. And then, we talked about the city attorney, at least in the beginning. Is there anybody else that you feel like should be on that? Like you, Morgan, like, or?
I think that's what we talked about, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That's what we talked about.
You got Taylor, right?
That's engineering.
Do you want all of those positions? Does the city want all of that granular in the actual ordinance, or is this a administrative, like, how-to guiding document for how to navigate ordinance? Or is that literally part of one, two, three?
My thoughts are, I think, I mean, if it's done by position and not name, obviously, I think those would be good people to include all the time. I don't think we would put those other entities, outside entities, on the technical review committee, but we would invite them to attend those pre-concept meetings. That's just my thoughts, and what everybody else thinks.
I look at it slightly differently, I'm more in the boat of generally, there's the land use authority, planning commission, and then administratively, you guys can update this as fluid as you would like. And have the TRC consist of whoever at the time.
So how, if we did it that way, how would that be decided? As a body of the planning commission, wouldn't we still have to have something in an ordinance that says? I mean, I know it says here that the land use authority can delegate the following responsibilities, but what does that look like? Do we, do we meet together as a commission and say, this is who we want to delegate to do this? Or, I, I feel like we have to have something that we can reference that backs us up on saying, this is why we did this, whether it's an ordinance or?
I think it would look like, uh, drafting an administratively use sheet, that this is who it's gonna be, and then you can change it whenever you want, without going through the process of changing the code.
I wonder, I, 'cause this is a little off, but, off the subject, but I thought, you know, a lot of organizations have their policies and procedures that they use. I think it would be helpful for the planning commission to have a policy and procedure manual that talks about stuff like this, how we set our agendas, all of that kind of stuff, so that we have a document that kind of keeps us consistent.
Yeah.
So maybe we could have something like that, and include this.
That would make sense.
And then, rather than doing it by.
I think it would make it more fluid, or more agile for you guys to adopt and verify, but ultimately hoping you guys is the authority. But that's my opinion, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm okay with that, I just like having direction.
I just feel like the code would get dated quickly, right, as things changed or moved, if we explicitly described the TRC in here. I don't think it would be representative for very long, potentially.
What do you guys think?
I agree. I don't think we need it. I think that's more administrative.
Anyone else wanna do it differently, or haven't you? Make it.
So on the, on the land use authority, this list of things like having it, are we talking about having it be put in a document, or just having a list that we have?
Well, I think, my understanding, maybe Craig may, if I'm wrong on it, Malcolm, what you're meaning, but it talks about here already, it lays out in the ordinance that the land use authority is the planning commission, and we can delegate these things. But then if we have our own, you know, policies and procedures, in that, we can say, okay, we designate the technical review committee to be these positions. And then if something happens where we need to make a change, rather than having to go through the whole ordinance process, in our planning commission meeting, we could say, you know, this isn't working, or maybe we wanna add another person to this, or we wanna take the city attorney off. We can just do that as a planning commission without having to go through so much stuff. I think that's.
I, I think that's, I think that's good.
But I think it accomplishes the end goal, that you guys make the decision of how it's done.
I may interrupt, you may have to solidify your TRC by ordinance.
Yeah.
I, it's going to have to be a part of your title ten in, in the land use title, chapter three or five, I can't remember which one it is. That will have to be determined by code, and you wouldn't be able to easily change that, but I would suggest having one through, one through eight, all appropriately delegated on an administrative document that's then approved by the planning commission. And so that would be separate from city code, and that could be passed at any meeting with no notice.
And that, and that makes sense, the land use authority will need to be, you know, concrete, that could work.
Okay, so the TRC needs to be administered by ordinance, but the rest of this?
Can all be done despite a vote.
So we need to add that, we need to specify that. So our TRC again is, we'll just hammer it up, who is it? You had a list, it felt pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, city planner, public works, city attorney, planning commission chair, engineering. I don't know if there was any, I don't think there was.
And Jared, that's what we talked about, that's.
That's good.
But we would invite them, but not put them on the actual.
That feels like the TRC, that's.
I think the attorney could be maybe not that mandatory, I think we'd get a good feel depending on the project, if we needed him, or if they wanted to be here.
I don't think you would be forced to, uh, create a quorum or, or force anybody to be involved, but just so I'm clear with, I write the ordinance, so city attorney, city planner, planning chair. City engineer and city planner, did I get everybody?
Public works.
City planner, public works.
Planning, you don't even have to say city planner, we're doing it anyways.
Oh, I did double city planner, yep, you're right.
You're just a planner, you're a planner.
Planning commission, maybe you have planning commission chair, and then city planner, but those are two separate.
Yep.
And outside entities if necessary.
Well, and we'll, we'll invite the outside entities, but I don't think we want them to be part of the TRC, right? Is that what we?
Actually on the TRC. I would say it's a, an, an extending an invitation without actually formalizing that they're on the TRC.
Yeah, and then the attorney's just optional, or at, you know, asking it to be optional, okay.
Do you want to have a, a caveat in there that, like, the planning commission chair can't come, so she just say, remember the planning commission, because, yeah.
Or delegate.
Planning commission chair or representative.
Yes.
And then, so if we're gonna move forward with that on these other eight, or these other items, and just kind of come up with the policies and procedures for the planning commission. Maybe planning commission could work together with you in like another work session, so we don't take time to do that now, since that's something, does that sound okay to you?
Can you say we already have something somewhere you think in place?
Well, I remember when I first started, the ULCT gives out a, I wanna say CLCT, they give a booklet out every year.
I have to hear.
Powers and duties, yes.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about administratively within the city, how we do things, because I have that booklet with me, 'cause I refer to it.
Yeah. I just do question me, I remember reading things when I first started, yeah. So anyways.
But then we could address these themes, I don't know.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. We can meet as a staff with the planning commission and identify how we're gonna do it, and create a document that we use. That works really well.
Wait, Morgan, were you saying there was a conflict with powers and duties, was something that was in here?
No.
Oh, okay.
Um, the other thing I had a question on, when you go down to subdivision appeal authority, ten eight eight, and it's item D. So it. I don't have a page number.
Thirty-nine, over there.
I had to make it bigger, because it was too small when I printed it out, so.
Depends on which.
Through my page number result. It starts off with, a party who has submitted a subdivision application or petition may appeal or complain to the appeal authority under this chapter. In such an appeal or complaint, the party may appeal or complain only regarding the land use authority's treatment of that party's own application. A third party may not appeal or complain of land use authority decisions or conduct. So currently, my understanding is in state code, I thought it said something, and even in our ordinance, that it says something under appeals, that an aggrieved party or an affected person can come in and appeal a decision that's made. So I just, I don't know if the state has changed that, or if I'm misunderstanding it, do you know?
No, I think we can, we can delete that. Um, one reason to add it would be, and, um, we can just, I'm not sure exactly, but I'm pretty sure you could limit it for this, the scope of this appeal. But you may not want to, one reason that you might want to is if you're worried about kind of political issues, like with public clamor, people appealing subdivisions for the wrong reasons. But at the same time, you might want someone to appeal because they didn't get notified about their, you know, that their ditch was gonna be bulldozed, and, you know, now they have issues, so. I think probably just deleting it would be good, you're probably not gonna see a bunch of people appealing just willy-nilly.
Yeah, you never know.
Hold on, hold on, wait a minute.
I just wanted to make sure we're doing, 'cause I thought the state code said that it was worded differently, so that it gave that option to people who had been, you know, negatively impacted by the decision, so I.
That makes sense.
So what do you guys think?
Is that what the state code said? Morgan, you looked into it, we have one, right? Someone appealed just recently to drug and alcohol.
Yeah.
What, what did we determine? They can't appeal it because, what did Brandon say?
Their, their connecting property lines, their, what's the proper word?
Well, why don't we just adopt it as their, why don't we adopt it as the state code is?
Adjacent. So they can appeal it, or they cannot?
They can.
That's what I understand, or.
Can't we just accomplish both of what Jacob said?
The team messaged to me, and I said, I don't even know if he can appeal, and then I looked it up, and it said.
When, when Brandon called me, he explained, he read the state code and said, if someone's adjacent to the property that's in question, they can appeal it.
So I think within the.
Can we try and accomplish it similar to that, Jacob, where we limit it to adjacent or aggrieved parties?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I think if you include aggrieved, if there was somebody water-wise that was maybe negatively impacted, that would give them some reasons where they could come in, and, I don't know.
Maybe damaged, aggrieved can just be there upset, right?
Yeah, damaged, I like that better. As, as long as it's okay with the state, like, that we're using the right, we're reaching that.
That sounds good, that we really limit it, but we also, we limited to affected parties, but, okay, but we don't, you know, we limit it to the applicant.
Okay, and then, still in that same section under E, if you go down to, uh, number three. It talks about if they are appealing, these are the things that they need to, that needs to happen. And it says any supplemental documentation or information that the appeal authority requests. So when we looked at these, the new appeal authority ordinances, we talked about whether they would do a de novo or a records approach for the appeal. And everybody felt like it was better to go off the, the records, so that if we, as the land use authority, make a decision, and then they appeal it to you guys, you are looking at the exact same information that we're looking, we looked at to make that decision. Where they couldn't introduce all of this new stuff that we didn't even see, because that's not really fair. And so, that was my understanding, that that's how we were gonna do it, but this would contradict that, the way that that's worded.
Jacob didn't have our new ordinance, so when we sent him that, that I think he can clarify that there, 'cause he didn't have that.
Um, and then number four, it says all appeals and complaints must be emailed or mailed to the city recorder, using the recorder's official city address, blah, blah, blah. But there's not a deadline on that, and currently in our appeal ordinance, I think it specifies that has to happen within fifteen business days. Um, I just think, we don't want people being able to appeal twelve years down the road, or what, I think, right? To me, I think we need to put a deadline on when they can make an appeal. I think it's from, right now, from when the final decision is signed, if they have fifteen calendar, or fifteen business days, if I remember correctly, but again, that should be in that ordinance.
In the new ordinance, yeah.
Um, under ten dash eight dash nine, going down further, under resubmital, it's item B. No application that has been denied by the land use authority shall be resubmitted in the same form for the same use, within one year from the date of the denial. And then it gives exceptions if we have changed the general plan or something like that, but what does that mean? In the same form for the same use, I understand the same use, like residential to residential, but if they have a subdivision and maybe they change it, so they have one lot less, or what are our, how are we gonna define that? So that we don't have it continually coming back in, where the intent of that ordinance is respected?
Didn't we talk about that in our staff review?
We did, I'm trying to find the discussion.
The substantial changes or something.
Yeah, yeah. Did we, it, it was that the question, so I think I directed a question to Jacob, I said, so if the applicant submits incomplete applications four times in a row, that uses up all four cycles they're entitled to, what happens when the one-year waiting period starts to resubmit? And then Jacob said, the interpretation is that, we went back to, it's not even a complete application, right? It's, that, that application would never enter into complete status, so it would never enter into that time period. We would just keep saying it's incomplete.
But this is based off of the denial, right? So we would have, if it makes it to a.
Yeah, so this section, if I could check it, I think they pulled this from your old code, so it might also be somewhere else in the document. And it's not required, so it's totally up to you on whether you wanna keep it or delete it. I think, I, I don't know, it's literally just totally up to you on if you wanna just remove it entirely, or, I guess the, the reason to keep it would be, you don't want maybe applicants who get denied just immediately reapplying with the same thing, and just basically annoying you until you finally approve it, right? Wasting your resources. That might be the concern, but at the same time, if you have an application fee that covers, you know, the cost of it, then maybe that is the concern.
That is in our new updated ordinance, 'cause I remember it's talking about this in city council, that it had to be the same, and then it went the year, but if there was changes, so we probably need to go back to what our ordinance was.
I think, I remember, if it's the same ordinance that the planning commission made a recommendation on, I think that had to do with, like, if somebody applied to open the general plan to do a rezone. That they couldn't apply any sooner than like twelve months or something like that, but as far as for a subdivision approval, like, if they say, okay, well, we shortened the frontage on one, so it's not exactly the same form. So we're gonna bring it in again and again, I'm just wondering if we need to have, like, a definition of what that means, same form, same use, so that we don't continually have them coming in more and more. And I think the city council probably has to be the ones to make that decision, 'cause you guys are the ones that do this ordinance, not.
We did ask this, and Jacob, you had said that state law doesn't define, 'cause we asked, what do, what constitutes a material change, and it, can that be defined? And Jacob said the state law does not define this, it's up to the city's discretion, but you had talked about, Jacob, possibly coming up with a definition of what substantial or material would mean in this case.
Yeah. Yeah, we gotta, we just have it here and say, it has to be materially different.
So your, your question is. If it just keeps coming back, every, one year, after one year comes back, same thing, one year.
Well, this way, it's, right now, they have to wait one year, but.
Yeah, now they do have to.
What if they come in, unless, it, it just says they, that they can't come in and resubmit in the same form for the same use. But what does that mean, how the use of?
I think my concern was like, they bring it in again, and it's basically the same, and they say, well, no, it's not the same, we moved the fire hydrant across the street, or.
That's what I'm hearing.
What's, what substantiates a change that we would accept it before that one year?
Yeah, I see, yeah.
And I think we need to define that, but I don't really know.
Maybe we can think about that, and then.
Oh, it's, it's, the, 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 the land use authority may waive the requirement, so it all depends on the land use people, authority, you guys, to decide if you're gonna waive that one year or not.
Well, and, but that's if it's affected by amendments to the general plan.
Depending on whatever criteria you decide. If it's not defined by the state, it's defined by you, 'cause you're the land use authority.
Well, if they comply with why you rejected it.
Yeah.
I guess.
If they make that correction, then.
Exactly.
The way it's worded here, the only way we can waive that is if there's been a change to the general plan. The way it's worded here, the only way we can waive that is if there's been a change to the general plan or to this title. There has to be an ordinance change. We can't just say, yeah, you can, we'll take it. The way that it's written in here at least, so I guess.
Jared, you're saying that, well, you experienced a material change, like we left it that vague, we're not overly comfortable. And again, I'm so new, I don't know, we're not overly comfortable, just saying that we get to determine what a material change is, that's not.
I don't think anybody's comfortable. I would rather have something that we can reference.
They get always dispute, this is a material.
Cause one person might say, oh, you let that.
It's hard, cause I understand where you're coming from, and I just don't know how, you know, granular we can get with the definition and still cover it. So it's hard, cause at some point we are gonna have to have a vagueness to it, but I agree that is fairly vague, cause they can always argue it's material, so. I don't know what that looks like.
It's gotta be based on the reason it was denied.
I bet we have an attorney.
You know.
What if we just say?
A consulted attorney who.
What if we just say no application that has been denied by the land use authority shall be resubmitted within one year from the date of denial, and we take out in the same form for the same use?
Period.
And is it a completed application? Right, cause if it's not complete, you, you just keep spitting it back, you, you're, you're no longer under a shot clock. You just keep saying, nope, it's not complete, nope, it's not complete.
Can we deny it if it's not complete? Cause this, where it uses the word denial, doesn't have to actually be, come to the point where we make a final decision and say if either approved or denied?
It depends on how it's submitted, right? So I think when we had gone through this process, if they keep sending in an incomplete application, it doesn't even, it's not technically a subdivision application yet. It hasn't, it hasn't crossed the threshold until it's complete. So I think that's where we felt more comfortable that staff would keep just sending it back, or whoever the planning commission delegates, right, to that intake process. It wouldn't, it would never continue on into the subdivision ordinance process. You would just keep saying, no, 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 no.
So this is only if it's actually made it through that process and then denied though, right?
Right, if it's a complete application.
So if we took just that part in the same form for the same use out, would that fix it? No application that has been denied by the land use authority shall be resubmitted.
I'm just thinking real world, so say they bring in a patio home, patio home submission and say that won't work, you know, for some reason it gets denied, they can't bring you back the same thing with a slight change. I think that's the intent, but what if they said, okay, you don't like that, we just wanna do half acre lots and it's zone half acre. Can they bring you back a new application that's a different project on the same property that now is conforming or?
I would say that would be okay.
Right, we wanna allow that, but we don't want them to bring back almost the same thing with a slight change, that you're probably gonna deny again, right? Is that what we're trying to avoid?
Yes.
So, and I think it would be hard to specify what all those might be, because we don't know them until they come before us. Because what if someone has this subdivision and they, and they were within the old and they wanna do hundred foot frontages? Well, that, if they were denied for some reason, now they bring it back and say, well, let's do bigger lots and do a hundred and thirty foot, well, that's something different.
Yeah.
I would think it would have to be the same, and maybe that will just have to be up to the discretion of the planning commission. Because I don't, I don't know how we could ever go through and list all those, and we're not willing to know them until, I mean, you, you just see whatever out there. I don't know how we could.
But what you just explained wouldn't be the same, right? I mean, they've changed the frontages.
Yeah, that's, that's my worry is that you're gonna have one applicant come in, and if we say, okay, we'll look at this. And then you have another applicant come in and we say, no, that's too similar to what you brought in, there's no criteria, and that makes me more nervous. I mean, especially because we're supposed to be, as, as the land use authority on this, it's not that we're interpreting. We're supposed to just make sure they're following the ordinance, like. And if we don't have the ordinance that spells it out.
I was gonna say, but to that point, it would go back to the reason you're denying it. So if it is a complete application and you guys accept it as a complete application, it starts the review process, your shot clock starts. You go back to why was it denied the first time? If they can't, can, if they can't progress through the deficiency, you just keep denying it and they just keep paying you, right? I, I think that's probably enough to, I mean.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a touch, you know, cumbersome, but I kinda get your point of like, even if they make a change and we have to accept it and then we reveal its nationality, and if it's not material in nature.
I mean, if we're going to, like, I see your point, if they.
How do we define that?
Change the spelling on a couple words and resubmit it, well, you just deny it again.
And that makes sense, that makes sense. So is there anything to protect the city as far as the time that's involved? Like if they come back in and it's a resubmission of something that's, that we've already gone through this whole process for, I mean, is it legal to say, okay, you had to pay this application fee, but now that you've come in, then it's been less than a year? And it's, now we're gonna have to go through this whole process again, just because of the time and everything involved, is it, does it merit charging a higher fee or something like that, so that they aren't as likely to come back in and just keep putting the city through?
What's their, what are, what are fees like, Jared? Sorry, I don't.
I don't know that, I'll tuck my hand out, it's not my wheelhouse.
Not your, uh.
So I, I want to make, just, just to be sure and clear, so the land use authority does not have the authority to rezone.
We can make recommendations, but you guys are.
So, so I anticipate most of the changes are gonna be, someone's gonna want higher density, they're gonna request rezoning. I think that's what's gonna happen. I think if, if someone came in and said, hey, I wanna do a subdivision in a three-quarter acres zoning, you'd probably be just fine with it. But what's gonna happen, probably is you're gonna come and say, I want six acres or quarter acres or whatever. But that would fall back on to the rezoning process, not the land use authority. Is that, is that correct?
And I don't think that'd ever get through the process, cause we'd say you're applying for something like this.
That does not approve.
So you rejected, it's not complete.
Yeah, it's like, so I think maybe, I don't know, getting stuck in the.
Leave it how it is. It's one of those things where you don't want it to bite you, where if something does come up, but maybe if we leave it how it is, and then if it becomes a problem, we can revisit it.
My recommendation would look into your fee schedule, right, and make sure that your fee schedule looks like it's incentive enough to make sure people aren't changing letters.
Yeah, if we could make it substantial enough.
Right, and I, I mean, you don't have to go above and beyond, but if it's enough just to dissuade uh, an arbitrary resubmission, okay, I don't think.
I'm comfortable with that.
I think, I mean, should we get an help on it, is the same form for the same use? Well, it's gonna be the same use, no matter what, you're applying for a subdivision. What does same form mean? You know, does, does, does form mean?
One acre lots versus three-quarter acre lots.
Well, that's, you know, we don't know what it means.
Even then, I'm, I was thinking about that, or even the frontage example we used earlier, it's never gonna get to these guys.
No.
Cause the TRC's gonna say, you're applying for three-quarter acre lots in a one acre zone, that's not eligible. Kick it back to them, that.
Yep, and then they would have to come in and request a rezon and open them to a real plan if they wanted to go that direction, which is like, right, so it's gonna be different.
Types of things, really, once it gets vetted through that TRC, it should be pretty compliant by the time it comes to these guys.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
If they can.
That sounds, that makes a lot of sense.
I think so.
I haven't been around long enough to think of all the scenarios.
You can't use that excuse anymore.
I can't.
You've been here like three months.
Three months of it.
Two months, is that already said?
Well, I can't think of one we've denied in the past. That got through the process that far.
Right.
You know what I mean? I can't think of one example.
Well, and often times like, historically staff would say, we don't think this is gonna fly because it doesn't meet the zoning or the frontage, but you can go ask them. But now if the TRC has a little bit of teeth to say it's not compliant and kick it back to them, you'll probably never see those ones.
That's true. Okay, um. On the next, uh, number two, it talks about the plat and everything that needs to go into that. And again, that's just something, I guess, that the planning commission will have to designate, well, this is gonna be, the plat needs to be reviewed by these people. That will fall under that administrative thing, so we'll skip that, cause I just didn't know who, which entities we want, like engineering, public works, city planner, everybody that has to sign off on those things. Um, do we currently have something down under plat, it's under number two and it's down eleven? Where it says hundred-foot no build setbacks from the center line of the Hoover and Howard sloughs. Where required by the city planning department and approved by the city council. The no build area shall be designated as public open space and dedicated to the city for future parks and trails. Is that what, does that, is it in our ordinance already? Or I just wasn't sure where that. That we would designate that as a park?
Or trails.
Parks or trails, okay.
Definitely a situation where someone screwed up a while.
Or, or in some cases kinda ran it back to them for a, you know, but they just ran it, they don't own it.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I wasn't sure if that was anything we needed to check before. If you go to where it says, number three. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have page numbers.
Forty-one.
Forty. And then it's item five. Roadway and utility plan and profile construction drawings, down number, or letter E. And it talks about these, you know, all existing and proposed utilities, et cetera. Uh, note, detailed design of structures is not required for a preliminary plat. Do we still have something called a preliminary plat, or are we not using that?
Yeah, or a commercial, well, there won't be small and large anymore really.
Well, I didn't know if we were using that verbiage anymore with preliminary and.
I, I think only on the commercial one. Which won't be in this ordinance, yeah, that's a good point. There is no preliminary, it's just one approval.
So I didn't know if we want that in there then, cause all of those themes we would want if it's a final, right?
Yeah, you can probably delete that note, huh?
I'm gonna go and delete it.
Okay. And then number three in that same section. Uh, talking about the sewer, all subdivisions shall be required to tie to this existing city sewer system. Vacuum sewer shall be provided in the subdivision unless it's sanitary, blah, blah, blah. Are we still doing the theme where we're not approving any theme where there's new sewer zones? Like, does that conflict with all?
That's a whole nother subject, but we don't wanna add on any more vacuum zones, but we'll have infill within the existing ones. And then future, I believe the plan is to have regional lift stations.
So.
So that might, could be worded a little bit better, that number three. Malcolm, I had a little bit of concern too, where it says that the sewer shall be provided. Seldom do we provide the sewer, they have to do it, yeah.
So I think we maybe need to change that to make sure it's how you guys want it.
Me and Jared cannot beat that quickly and send it to Jacob.
Yeah, that is sort of good.
That'll be good.
And then, the next, item F, all new subdivisions shall be required to install a land drain system if basements, lowest floor slab of the structure lower than existing ground level are to be constructed. So every single subdivision that has basements, they need to have a land drain system. And then it says structures with basements shall be required to have a sump pump that ties to a footing drain, and the footing drain shall tie to the land drain system. Do we require that on every single home that has a basement right now? Because my home doesn't have that, when we built out here, we did, we were not required to put in a sump pump. So I just didn't know if that's something that we currently require.
That was updated since Lakeview, um, one thing I have a little bit of concern, I'm not sure that's compliant with LUDMA. I think they have some provisions in there about basements.
So maybe you and Jared.
I liked, I like this, um, cause we know the homeowners are gonna have problems out here if they build basements and don't have land drain. But I'm not sure if it's compliant with LUDMA.
Will you check in about that?
I'll make a note and I'll look into it, yeah.
Sorry. What? LUDMA.
LUDMA, land use.
Land Use Development Management Agency.
And then going down the line G.
Phone book, thanks.
Uh, for subdivisions being proposed in flood-prone areas or areas along the slough or other waterways, the city council may impose a lowest slab elevation, da-da-da-da-da. How will the city council impose that if the city council is not part of this review process?
Change it to land use.
Have it already in place?
Yeah, like, we have to re-change the land use.
Sounds like a well job.
Cause again, if we have an ordinance that's already in place with that, it's just a matter of the land use authority versus planning commission enforcing that. So I think we could change that.
Forty-two, twenty, isn't it?
Yeah.
Went a little lower, what are, where are we at, Jared? It went a little lower.
This is a little different than that, that's kind of the no build floodplain number, but this is subdivisions being proposed. So it could be maybe along a slough or even a low area. I think this gives the, what we're proposing land use authority to be able to say you can't build below a certain level. And I would guess that would be based, recommendation from our engineer based on the geotech report.
We've said that forty-one fifteen, haven't we?
Forty-one fifteen is like the no build along the floodplain, and then we've adjusted to forty-two twenty for the building. So that gives us that buffer for infrastructure.
So I have a question, if, so let's say we change the wording there to be land use authority. And we're gonna have our administrative little thing that tells us, you know, the planning commission delegates this to this group, but this for the technical review. When it's something like this, cause obviously this is something that could be like a case-by-case thing, if somebody came in. How do we go about doing that so that we know anytime there's something like this, that needs to go to the technical review committee, or it needs to go to the city engineer or something like that?
I think you could just put some fairly vague language, just say like any other, like possible conflicts with, I don't know. Some sort of language that would be nice, and it basically would refer to technical review committee.
And then the technical review committee, you could just decide who needs to look at that, cause the engineer would be part of that for Jared.
Yeah, I think so.
Sure seems like, Jared, this would be something that would get caught, right? Like it's part of a, like a soil test or something.
Yeah.
We would require it based off, and it would, it would be something.
If we get a geotech that says, hey, this is, water table's at eighteen inches, that'd be some where we would have the city engineer recommend to the land use authority a slab elevation of X, you know? Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. Okay, and then we already talked about the fencing thing that needs to be updated, and the final approval letters for the different utilities. Um, and those final approval letters, those will all come in before it ever comes out of that. Like, we're gonna request those in the second, the second phase part of that.
It's in the first, actually, so, well, not in the pre-application meeting, but it's going to be part of the city staff or whoever you designate. The person that's saying yes or no, yes it's complete or no it's not, yeah.
Okay, alright.
I got one, uh, kinda, in the sense it's in there, I'm gonna bring it up while we got this body here. The land use separation fence, the whole, when it was adopted, it was put in place partially to keep construction debris from blowing into farm fields adjacent to the development. So the rule says they have to have that fence in before they get building permits, which would generate the debris that blows coming to the site. So that's the logic behind what we do. I don't believe that's compliant with LUDMA either. And so I don't know exactly how we enforce that or if we can, but it was the main purpose of the ordinance.
Does that talk about it in the new one you guys just said? When that has to be put in?
We said before, right?
Before building permits.
From that, yeah.
I believe LUDMA says we can't withhold the building permit for any reason other than fire code and.
Cause I think it might fall under, like, the landscape provisions.
Yeah.
Will you put that up?
Yeah, I'll look it up.
Now, what, one thing I thought, and I had probably some attorney advice here, but the land use fence kit could be safety-related because it could separate different land uses, like an industrial or a residential. Where we wouldn't want children maybe crossing that boundary. I don't know if that would give us enough teeth to still enforce it before building permit, but.
Or even agriculture, because there could be cows or a bull or anything else.
Farm equipment, chemicals, yeah, I think it makes sense, I just, it's hard to get it to comply with LUDMA, so.
So is that one we, we need to look into?
I think we need to.
I'll look at it, yeah.
And we'll get that new ordinance for Jacob too.
Um, under supplemental information. Uh, item number two, and this is how it reads in our code right now, but I just didn't know if we wanted to keep it this way. Sounds like it gives them the option to either send mailings to all the residents within six hundred feet of the proposed subdivision or put a four-by-four or greater sign clearly addressing the proposed action. Do we even wanna have that sign thing as an option? I feel like they should mail that out to every single person that's gonna be affected. Do we even wanna have that sign thing as an option? I feel like they should mail that out to every single person that's gonna be affected. I know it's how our code reads right now, but since we're redoing this. Or is that state code? Do we have to give them the option of those two themes?
Not, not state code. So there is a reason to do the envelopes and the addresses, but that may not be applicable anymore, at least for the one family residential. And if you're, if you're going to be amending an existing subdivision, then you do have to provide notice to basically everyone in the subdivision. This may have grown out of that or someone that desire, but yeah, I think you could, if you wanted to, just leave on paragraph.
So are they not required anymore to give notice to people that live within six hundred feet of what's happening?
No.
We still do that on a rezone though, right? A rezone request, we would have to, but not for the actual subdivision. Okay, what do you guys?
Would that apply just to this residential subdivision, but a commercial may still have the requirement?
Yeah, so we took this requirement from the other chapters, so it should be there applying to like commercial and everything else as well.
And we're gonna.
So if we leave it here, it wouldn't mess with those.
Bring stuff on here so that doesn't get confused.
Do you guys like the idea of letting?
Of letting people know? I would wanna know personally if a big subdivision was going in by me, I know that, to me, I don't know that people are gonna feel really happy. If all of a sudden, there's something going in that like we were never notified.
Four by four sign, has that ever happened?
Drinking alcohol or eating that thing.
That's my partner's question.
And saying that part, you can.
It's just, it's just the sign.
The only reason I could see maybe leaving this sign in there is if by chance you sent something to a resident and they had a different. They moved or somebody else, and anyway, someone can say, oh, I didn't get that, because that happens sometimes.
We could require both, I mean, we could require both, that we.
Change it from or to and.
Yeah.
I don't wanna require both, personally.
Yeah, I think you could.
I'm sorry, not that, not that, I don't care. I don't wanna do it. It's on my career.
You're not the one.
I don't wanna do that. Yeah, Morgan, anyway, sure, go ahead.
This, this doesn't have to do, I mean, this isn't to do with houses or anything, but the way that we found out that fifty-one hundred was being considered for the legacy was in the newspaper. I mean, and the city knew about it, you know, but they never said anything to us.
Have the letter been effective?
I think so.
I think so.
Should we just get rid of the sign?
On, well, on the backside of it where people feel like they don't get noticed is, I make a copy of who I send the notices to and stick it in that folder.
Jared, does anyone?
Because people have something. Because we have people complaining all the time.
Not a lot, but we have had some.
And I think, there's always an issue with transparency and people are gonna say, the city never told us. And even if we don't have to, I think it's respectful to notify people that something's going in. If we're gonna take anything off, I'd rather take the sign off or require both, Malcolm.
Wait, also, I.
Kinda nice to know.
I'm fine leaving it as it is.
To this being a staff, this, I, my, maybe I'm wrong, I don't, this is, this is the applicant providing this. So staff shouldn't have to do anything.
Well, it's gotta be such a headache getting the applicant to do it, the staff does it.
Well, I mean, the applicant though needs to actually do the stamped address. I know normally for a rezone, the onus is on staff, but for this case, and if we need to amend the language. But they should actually be like serving it up on a gold platter, like it should all be done.
They don't and it didn't work and now we charge them.
But this is part of the requirement.
But this is part of the application requirement, so if they don't do it, you can just keep saying, no, it's not a complete application. Until you actually give me your four by four sign and you have all the stamped and addressed envelopes, you can continue to say, no, it's not complete. You could hold them to it.
Or.
I think that used to be something, sorry, that used to be done, but then, it, before my time, trees would say, well, then we have to go back and check their work. And make sure they're actually notifying everybody that's within that six hundred feet, so then they've just disregarded that. And now we just charged the applicant a dollar.
Right.
Per notice.
Did I misunderstand you, Jake? Did you say that they, the applicant on a residential does not have to do that?
Well, not under the state code for a subdivision application, but if you wanna require it, that's fine too.
Okay, okay.
It's in our city code just like this right now.
I'd just leave it the way it is.
Just leave it?
Maybe we should make them have it and just start doing it like you said, and then it's not a complete application.
Well, and this does change it.
That's how it currently is, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
This changes it, I think, so that the developer has to do it, I mean, right?
That's the main problem, you see?
Like require them to turn into it with the application.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Here's the complete application, here's my stamped envelope.
To your point, the work would have to be probably to check their work, but you could even add another thing here to, you know, whatever method you would use to prove. Like, make them prove their methodology, maybe make them write up their methodology for how they determine the six hundred feet. So then you don't have to do anything, it's, because they should be doing everything and giving it to you, signed, sealed, delivered.
Not complaining, they can do that, but.
Yeah.
That's how it was when I came in, so I just did work with that, so.
It seems I'm not involved in that part of the process, but it seemed like we would get fifty envelopes and then find three or four more in that circle. That they didn't include, and so it became so cumbersome to go check everyone and make sure they were there, they just started doing them. And they provided the stamped envelopes, but I.
All you gotta do is.
I remember, I remember Brian.
Yeah, that's, that's the postmaster, how's it?
Yes, it would be the best one.
Tells you what the addresses are.
Do what?
Tells you what the addresses are on the six hundred foot radius.
Sounds like, sounds like we can just leave it as it is and Morgan can just decide if she wants to continue to tell applicants to do it for her. She can just tell her administrator if she wants to do it.
And where we're not required by the state, if we put it on the developer and they bring it in and somebody complains and says, I didn't receive anything. That's on the developer, because that was their, like, we're not the ones sending it out. We're, we're trying to help you out by requiring that they do it, but we're not responsible for checking that they have maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, they couldn't complain, they just.
Because they, you don't even have to do it.
We're just trying to be nice. Yeah, I appreciate that.
They do, it's, it's.
It's according to the law.
Yeah.
But I mean, according to the state, right? But do we have to check up on them that they do it?
We should just go.
Well, so the way that it's written right now is that they just give you the envelopes with stamps. And then, it would like, and addresses, and then you're the one who would A, check to make sure that they gave you all the envelopes that they needed to. And then B, put it in mail. At least that's how I'm reading what you currently have, but I mean, we could change it, but that way you're checking to make sure that everyone actually gets notified. And otherwise, like, how would they prove that they actually mailed everyone?
And we're doing that right now already, right? Because it's in our code?
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing it for.
That you're doing it for.
Yeah, but by, by your own choice, by selection and by preference. We can always make them do it if we want.
I just don't know if our code says right now that the city does it, or that, I mean, it sounds like it would be.
Yeah, it'd be charged you a buck, yeah. Two bucks.
Only a dollar per notice, so the dollars, others, the stamp, which is almost a dollar now, the envelope, that's paper, but notice.
Post office.
Give us a slack or something.
So what's the consensus? Leave it, change it, do?
I'd leave it alone.
Okay.
I'd leave it just like it is, right?
Okay, then down under, this is something we'll have to decide, I guess, one copy of the plat drawn on mylar for signing and recording. We can decide as a planning commission who's gonna review that, I guess. And then, same thing with, okay, so item D, the land use authority shall produce, maintain and make available to the public. An application form listing the specific items that comprise a complete application, so this is where it talks about having all of that in and a breakdown of any fees. So, is that something we would work together, I guess, with Malcolm to?
With Jacob.
Jacob will complete, yeah, okay.
Okay.
While you're adjusting, do you wanna fix that paper plans, Malcolm? Where it says to deliver three twenty-four by thirty-six? I'm the only old duffer that still wants paper plans. Everyone else wants it electronically.
Yeah, we could.
Do you wanna adjust that while we're tweaking things, or?
I'll let him know.
Is this for the plat or the improvement?
To have, make.
For the copies in number seven there.
Two, three.
But it says four.
Okay.
One of the mylar, but then they're talking about the black and white, yeah.
Four requires a digital copy.
Because we've talked about that, that's just an expense to them and why we don't, no, we use this one, that's a.
So, take it off.
So would we provide, would we provide one for the irrigation?
Well, and we need to make sure that they get an electronic copy to the engineer, to Taylor. Who else wanted, like, you want electronic?
What about, like, irrigation company again, we talked about?
Yeah, I don't know on that one.
Shouldn't they be requiring it as part of their availability letter?
The irrigation company? Yeah, they did, they did require.
So.
That, that's the train wreck I can see coming, is they take them at the first set of plans to get a letter so that our application's complete. We haven't even started reviewing and changing anything yet. And now their letter of approvals based on something that's different.
That's a little tricky.
We'll have to be diligent in getting.
We'll have to make sure we let them know.
Yeah. Irrigation company to even go and review it.
Well, to, you know, to help correct that.
I guess sometimes, Jared, in process speaking, we should be able to deny the application. And then require new letters of approval, right? Like, if you're saying there's something, hey, these plans are not approved, we're denying it, go submit again with new letters, so.
You mean, what do you mean?
We should be able to put the burden on the applicant.
Guess that number two, checks on quality, here's your stuff back, it's gotta be approved.
So not, just, I understand, not denying it really, but just saying it's not complete yet. So before we can move forward, you need to do these themes, because denying it, that would mean it comes to us and then they can't reapply again.
Yeah, we're not gonna deny it, we're gonna not approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna be requesting revisions and then just pointing out that the letters have to be updated to match the revisions.
Yeah, we'll just make them new updates, that way we can avoid that.
That's the missing link we've had in the past, because I've been clear to a pre-con meeting and Hooper Water shows up and says, we approved fourteen water connections and you've only got twelve on here.
Yeah.
You know, that's a problem, so we'll just have to be diligent in making sure we get new letters every time we have a plan update.
And these are copies they're bringing us, correct? Like, we only need three, that doesn't mean that Hooper Irrigation's not going to require them to do one, but that's really not us, this is what we want.
Yeah, there was a time, I think, when this was written, we were delivering the copy to Hooper Water and to try and fix that problem.
Make sure they're all the same, though, so the plans were all the same, sometimes they were.
Make sure they were always on the same sheet.
Same page, sometimes the plans were different.
But I think we can achieve the same thing this way, so.
So remove all three copies for both improvement plat and plat.
No, Jared wants one.
Just one.
So we just change that, so one for map.
I'd better put it, I'd better put it at two, I don't mean to be a hassle, but if Jared's gonna be teaching me how to have a paper plan, I better have a copy of my own.
Well, then we may, now that we got those iPads and if we can get the, get J U B to download our G I S on there, I might convert over it. Fix it over.
Okay, yeah, yeah, how long, like, a few days to do so.
Well, what's hard on my world, I can review digital, but then if I need to take it into the field right now, I don't have anything to take it with me. Or if Darren, the sewer guy, wants to go out and check something, I can hand him the plan and he goes and looks at it, but. We can't get it out into the field, so. I think we're worried about that, so.
Yeah, so what do you want to say then?
Just one set of plan, one set of paper plans, twenty-four by thirty-six.
That's fine. I'll just ask for an iPad.
Okay.
And ask me one.
Alright, so down under ten dash eight dash ten, concept conference. We had talked about having these on set days, like the first and third Wednesday of the month at like three o'clock, so that we can let. But it's, what page is that on? Sorry, map.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
I don't think, well, actually, Jacob, they could restrict to the day, as long as it's calendared on one of their days that they choose. As long as they calendar it within the deadline, it can be restrictive, right?
Yeah, that's right, and to be fair, there's like a twenty percent chance that someday there's a case about this and the judge says, scheduling it means you have to hold it within fifteen days. Or maybe the legislature comes out next session and says that, I don't know, there isn't like a possibility of that, so I would say restrictive, but just make it reasonable.
So if we did.
Don't say, you can only once a year on New Year's Day, you know?
Well, if we said, if we said the first and third Wednesday of the month is when we're gonna do these pre, pre-application meetings. And that we're gonna hold them at three o'clock, so, but when they come in and they say they want one, we have to do it within fifteen days, so that would.
Schedule it.
Schedule it within fifteen days, so that would make that doable. But for me, and I think other people would appreciate the fact that if you know Wednesdays, three o'clock, these two Wednesdays out of the month. I need to leave my calendar open because I know there could be a pre-application meeting that day. I just think it's better than trying to throw something in and.
Yeah, I think we can keep that, we can just keep running with it.
And then maybe let the other entities that may be invited, like Hooper Irrigation and stuff, know, these are the days we're gonna be having those, just so you're aware ahead of time.
Yeah, we can do that, well, I don't, we do our straightest tactics, I mean, so.
One thing that is something we're gonna have to coordinate too, I don't know that the other entities know this is coming. And they're used to the old long process, so we're gonna have to get them.
I'll send, I'll send them a packet.
Um, okay, next, well, it's my next page, it's still under concept conference, but it's number two. Just talks about that we shall provide or have available on the city website the following at the time of the meeting. Copies of applicable land use regulations, a complete list of standards required for the project and relevant application checklist. I know we've had problems with our website, are we gonna be able to have that in place by the time?
We're in the process of getting a new website, it's a process, so it'll probably take two months to get that done. And then, the new website manager is going to make sure all this is updated.
Well, one and two should already be on, right, in theory, right, and then we really just need to get three on once we have a checklist. That's, because one and two, I, that could be misinterpreted, but they're already on, right? They should just be on our ordinances.
We don't, we don't have our standards on there, though.
Well, and a, a lot of those land use ordinances that have been updated this past year, they're not on there, they're not on there.
Oh, yeah, no, they're definitely not updated, so yeah, Jared, we.
Because I tried to look them up, so I could, I could send them to that one, what's his name, call, and they couldn't, they're not on there.
No, it's a lot.
So then, here where it says, sorry, going.
Don't worry about it.
Ten, eight, twelve, review. Item B, I. City staff will first review the application for completeness. If staff find the application to be complete, they will forward it, forward it to the land use authority and the technical review committee. So, we were gonna have the technical review committee look at that to make sure it's complete, right? Or, that's what's gonna happen after they come in and have, I mean, that first thing happens. If they've made application, the technical review committee is gonna be the ones that look at that first and say, this is complete. Because that's gonna be you and Jared and engineering and a member of the planning commission.
I, I think it'll just be the planner that sees it, if it's complete, you'll just look and see if everything's there and then you'll line up a T R C meeting to review it.
But, but we don't say anything to them that, yeah, this is a complete application, you don't tell them that it's complete until the technical review committee looks at it, right? Because doesn't that start our clock? And we wouldn't know if it was complete unless we had the different bodies that know what needs to be in there looking at it. Maybe I'm not understanding that specifically.
We have our checklist, you made it, right?
Yeah, I've updated that a bit.
Everything's checked on that, is that complete?
Yeah.
So maybe if we put, city staff will review the checklist for completeness, but it's not like saying that their application is, I don't know.
Do you feel comfortable checking all those boxes? I mean, I think that's within city staff's realm.
That's Malcolm's deal.
I just worry because doesn't that start a clock when he says that they have a complete?
Once, yeah, once the complete notification has, has been issued, and again, we talked about this, there's no deadline for when you can complete, but it has to, like, we're talking good faith, we're talking reasonable, right? But, yeah, once that decision is made that it's complete, then the fifteen day shot clock starts.
I think the technical review committee needs to be the one to say this is complete. I mean, they can come in for a pre-application meeting, we can tell them all the things that they need. But in order for us to look at those things they give us and say, this is complete, I feel like public works and engineering need to be a part of that before. This is all like to weed out stuff before it actually gets to the planning commission, right?
And there are some things that you, like, you may want the city engineer to review, you may not want to be reviewing some of these checklist items, you can, but. I mean, if it says T R C, it still allows you to do that review, it doesn't force anybody else to do the review, but.
Well, the most people on the T R C committee are the staff, if staff finds that.
I'm fine, I'm fine with saying the T R C already is the first for completeness.
I think it's just safer to have more eyes.
Well, I think it's just, that's the word we need to change, because you are going to be the first line when you see it and you're going to make sure that they have all the anti, like, everything's there. We can't use the word complete, because now they're using that different, but for, I don't know what word to use, but if they've completed. You know, A through L, then you will give it to this, this. You know, A through L, then you will give it to this, this technical review committee, and they'll make sure that, there has to be somebody on the city set, when someone comes to bring it in, to at least go through that checklist, and I thought that would be you.
What if we say T R C ready, that, you know, they bring in the checklist, you make sure all of those things are on there, you're not saying that they need every, you know, that everything's okay with it, but they've put everything on the checklist, and so it's T R C ready, and then you schedule. Whether it's a T R C meeting or however we're gonna do that, would that work?
But isn't that the whole point of the process with the four cycles is to weed out with the T R C things that might be wrong, but I'm just thinking real world. He can check and say, hey, you got your letter from Hooper Water, you got your letter from Hooper Irrigation, all of the boxes are checked.
Complete, not accurate.
Right, and then, and the T R C is gonna say, hey, you got your sewer line on the wrong side of the road or whatever, and, and start that process, but I.
Yes. Yeah.
I would think we almost have to start the clock if they've got all the boxes checked.
So I, I think this is almost some verbiage we helped push a little bit, but I think the logic for it was, is we don't want, right, because how do you ever start the shot, you know, and you start the fifteen days until some preliminary review's been done, right? Because, so anyways, I don't mind if it says the T R C will review for completeness, and then.
Then you can check all of those boxes to make sure everything's there, and then the T R C can look, actually look at them and see what we need.
Yeah, if we determine there, I just, how long, Jacob, how long do we have once we've received an application to determine completeness?
Well, yeah, so that's. A, a gray area, one of many, I would recommend, all else being equal, I would personally like the approach of having staff look at it, because then it can happen very quickly. If it's the T R C, then, I mean, are you gonna like have eight people look at it? Probably not gonna get that done in like, I don't know, the first couple of days, maybe it's a week, and then you start getting to this more gray area where the applicant's like, I gave you an application. And if it turns out to have been complete, why did you wait a, a week, you know, before you told me that it was complete, and then you want your fifteen days, you know? So that's a risk that I would, I would wait, like initially, I don't know, you would all have more experience with handling actual applications that come in and, and dealing with developers. I, my, my thought here is that it's fair to say it's complete if they have a plat. If the plat is totally wrong, it doesn't matter, because it's still a plat. So I think it's fair to say, you know, complete, not accurate, that, um, you might even be able to say complete, not even close to accurate. And you can just then have the T R C dig into the details after that and deny it, but I don't know, I don't wanna have an answer as far as how soon you have to review. I would, just like that says, especially since you do have staff who can review it quickly, I would say like a day or two.
Could we, could we say that maybe when, uh, they bring in everything and they, they feel like they've checked all those boxes, they can give it to you, and maybe between you and Jared, you can say, okay, yeah, this is ready to move forward, and then we can start the process at that point, so that. I don't know, I might, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
No, and I actually think you're right, I think we actually specifically asked for this language to leave it to city staff, so it, it could be you, it could be a city engineer, it could be anybody on staff, just to check boxes. So that if you're on vacation for three weeks in the middle of December and a developer drops off, you know.
There's someone else.
There's somebody else that can check boxes and make sure it's complete.
Yeah, it's complete, but like he said, not accurate, so now, you've said, alright, let's start the shot clock, and we'll send it to the T R C.
But it's not complete, so then, like, if that happened.
It is complete, but it's not accurate.
It is complete, and then, and T R C or land use authority would then say denied because of, and you have to list all the reasons why.
Which is kind of the whole point of the T R C, right?
So, would it cause a problem if, let's say, this is just a random example, let's say, they come in and they have a water, they have, will serve, final will serve letters from Hooper Water, but they don't have one for Hooper Irrigation. And that person misses it.
He would deny it.
Not that person necessarily sitting right there, but that person who's going to be.
City staff would deny it then.
Well, but what if he misses it, and then it comes to us? The application wasn't complete to begin with, so.
The checklist hasn't checked.
But he's gonna say it is, right?
Why would he say it is if it's missing?
If he missed it, if they're.
He's not gonna miss it.
Okay.
He's gonna not miss it, because.
But even if he does, I think you still have the authority to say that, I know we have this.
Deny it, but.
Oh, that's right, because there's that part in here, even if city staff says it's okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Planning commission can still say it's not if we catch something that way.
Yeah. Right, you would still say, it's still incomplete, he was wrong, like, yeah, you're, I think you're self-protected, okay.
That's number two.
Yeah. If the land, if this is saying right down number two, if the land use authority determines that an application is not complete, it shall notify the applicant, applicant of the incompleteness. So that's you, that would, that's Malcolm that would do that, or whoever's filling in for him. Um.
No, that's you.
That's us?
You're the land use authority.
Well, delegated to city staff through the administrative.
Yeah, you can delegate.
Okay, because it's not gonna come to us now, like, we don't get a say, right? If, he's saying it's complete, not accurate, so he's gonna have to notify them if they're missing something.
Yeah. Right. Two, and we could clarify, change land use authority, but it still works because of the land use authority delegating that action to city staff, and it would be through that administrative.
That document that we're doing, okay.
Yep.
Um, let's see, and then we talked about the appeals process, ten dash five dash seven, that's not updated, but it sounds like the city's gonna get you the updated ordinances. Same, there's a couple other places on there, but they're administrative.
Questions about, they're the appeal authority in this context, is the city council, is that correct?
And then if we turn them down and they want to appeal it, then they go to our hearing rooms.
Okay.
Some of these we've already addressed, I know you're happy to hear that. Okay, so down under F, after the land use authority.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, sorry, is that forty-seven, we're almost there.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Okay.
Okay, so where it says, um. Item number one. With the exception of modifications or corrections that are needed to protect public health and safety, that are needed to enforce state or federal law, or that arise from the review cycle being reset. The city waives non-compliance subdivision-related requirements that the land use authority does not identify during the review process. This is if we, if we don't make, if we don't make the deadline, but I'm just wondering, what would that possibly be? What would something like that look at that wouldn't have, it would not be connected to public safety or health? Um, what non-compliant subdivision-related requirements could that mean?
So I think this would be like if your, Jordan say they need a six-foot screen fence, and they, you propose a plan that says five-foot fence, and you just don't notice, and you approve the subdivision, they are fine doing the five-foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, we already talked about only being able to have one public hearing, and so that public hearing, the best time for that would be after number three in the cycle, right? Because it has to be before number four.
Yeah, that's right, well, I mean, it could be technically during the fourth cycle, and then you could, like, yeah, I mean, the best time would be in the middle, because you've already, maybe polished up a few things, then anyone from the public can look at it, and then you still have time to request more revisions later.
Okay, so who decides when? That takes place, like, what the date is, when that's scheduled, if they come in and they say, so we let them know number three, that we're missing this, this, and this. At that point, does that trigger this public hearing, or do we wait until they respond, which then it puts us after number four, so to me, I'm just wondering, like, would it be better to have. It between number two and number three, so that if we wanna make, let's say somebody comes into the public hearing and they have a valid concern about the water or something. Do we wanna do it at a point in the process so that we can still add that to conditions that we're giving them? And not wait until.
That sounds like, that sounds like it'd be a good idea in practice. As far as the code goes, you could leave it flexible and just say the land use authority will determine if and when when it's needed.
Okay.
And because the other thing too is, if an application comes in perfect on day one, you don't have to go through all four cycles, you could just approve it after twenty days. And so in that case, maybe you wanna hold the hearing in phase two rather than phase three.
Okay, so maybe that's something we could put in that administrative document that just kind of gives us a guideline of, but we don't have to have it set that it's always gonna be at the same point in the cycle, would that work?
That, would that work?
Work, true, makes sense.
Can we make the timelines, why, if we should be held once a month?
Yeah, that's a good point. So in other cities that you guys have walked through this process, does the planning commission meet more than once a month?
Rarely. So it's typically, yeah, just, what, like, whatever monthly meeting fits best kind of in the middle of the review process, we'll just go with that.
Okay, I guess if we get bombarded, we can always change that, but, um. So, when we have this, the tech committee, technical review committee look at this, after you've said, okay, we have all the checkboxes. Does that mean we have a meeting with the technical review committee, or do you just send it out to engineering, public works, a member of the planning commission? Are we able to like converse over a group email, so if we have questions, like, if I look at it and I say, well, this doesn't make sense, but it's a question that Jared or Taylor would need to answer? How do we do that? Like, what does that look like, where it goes to the technical review committee after you've said the boxes are checked and we have a complete but not accurate application?
I like the idea of a meeting. That, that's how Tracy and I used to just, there was a point when we reviewed them separately, but then we're just sending redundant information half the time, so. We'd just sit down and review them together, but, I mean, we're all here pretty much, and Taylor can come, it's gonna be.
Planning commission.
Planning commission member.
I, I don't, I don't think Brandon will stay involved long, is my interpretation.
And. Well, and like Jared said, there probably will be some that we really need him here for, and others that.
Yeah.
We won't, so, but at least if we include him in it, then he can kind of decide maybe.
I will say it's up to your enabling, like, you have the authority to determine what your enabling ordinance will say, so for example, one of the ones I found, the T R C may establish procedures for the preparation and conduct of T R C meetings. Scheduling of meetings, conduct of meetings, and field trips, et cetera, so it's up to you.
Field trips.
Yeah, hey.
Field trips, yeah.
So, I guess, what does that look like, so that we can work, I guess, within the confines of the dates and deadlines? Is probably not possible to have a set day that we do those meetings on, or how does that, what is that gonna look like? And I'll try to be there as much as I can, but sometimes I have to delegate someone else, and I know a lot of the planning commission works, and.
For sure.
I guess we could join by Zoom if we needed to.
Yeah, we probably wanna work on a set date, because it's gonna alter, so, but, uh.
There, yeah.
We definitely, I think a meeting would probably be the most effective, just as early as possible when we get a complete application, because we both be on a pretty strict timeline all of a sudden.
Yeah. Okay, I guess some of this.
And I think Taylor will be really accommodating, but there may be just some days he just can't, it'd have to be the next day or something.
As long as we're within, uh, what, fifteen days or whatever, how long do we have, once they have the boxes checked? We have fifteen calendar days, right?
Fifteen days.
Add a review, add a s, fifteen days for review and response.
Business.
Business days.
Fifteen, fifteen business days, so this fifteen, uh, this is the water, I guess, notification is fifteen calendar days. Where am I missing on that?
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, right, my number three is the, two and three both go to the, that's fifteen business days.
Okay. But, that applies to number one as well. Applicant submits complete application, and from that point, we have fifteen days now.
So, that one is calendar days to notify every one of the facility owners. Uh, you know, couldn't be clearer, truly.
Well, I mean, from, from when we get the, the complete application, number one.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, it doesn't, I, I mean, just, I think the way the cycle is, is that it's, they're, they're saying that one and two are the same step in terms of the fifteen day response.
It doesn't say, right? Just, it's always the fifteen. Okay.
Because we'll respond to a complete application, but I get what you're saying.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I mean, just as we're talking on that, we're just gonna, as soon as possible, and.
Yeah, and, and really, I mean, we got three weeks, it's not like we're seeing Taylor at least once a week anyway, we did, I don't think it'll be a problem.
And then we'll always invite, or we'll try and coordinate the planning commission, you guys can come to them later, and then, I mean, even if they don't attend, it doesn't matter, I mean, we hope you do, we can, but can, you know, have to attend, right? T R C can proceed on.
Yeah, and maybe we can just, like I said, do Zoom or if there's an update or something, we can always call you for an update if one of us isn't able to be there, just to kind of.
Yeah, we'll always.
Good, good. I don't believe, other than maybe one water's week, ever had a subdivision that submitted perfectly the first time. So we can meet with Taylor and you and I and get most of the groundwork out in the way that they probably don't care about anyway, like, hey, you got your storm right under the curb, we don't allow that, it has to be out. Get all that stuff out of the way, and then somewhere in those cycles, we'll be able to get a commission member there.
For sure.
Okay. Alright.
One question I have that I think we talked about in our staff review that I don't know if we talked about, are we able to limit to phasing? Or can someone bring us a hundred lot subdivision and do it all at once?
Jacob, I think you're, I think we asked that, and I think you said that current phasing restrictions can still apply?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little weird with this combined process, because like typically you'd have preliminary phases approved for the whole hundred lots, and then maybe final plats for like ten a piece or something like that. So, it really depends on how you wanna do it, but yeah, we can like add it on as long as it doesn't impact these deadlines, so I think. If you're gonna do it, you would want to, I, okay, I guess there's really two ways of doing it, one is you just say, um, you just have a limitation of, I don't know, like.
Thirty.
Actually, I guess there's probably only one way to do it with this combined process, yeah, just, I mean, you could just say you can only subdivide ten at a time. But, or you can also, you know, include like a, a requirement that maybe they give you like a general sketch of the larger subdivision, but, I don't know, I probably wouldn't worry about that, I would just say whatever. You need to see before you can confidently approve a, a phase, I would say you just require that as one application. And then I guess if you really wanted to, you could expand the improvement completion section. So they have different timelines to complete different improvements, like in their improvement plan, maybe they say, we're gonna develop in phases. And so even though they can record the whole lot, their plan says that they get to, you know, have a year to complete the first phase of the public improvements and a year for the second and so forth.
How does it work?
Maybe I just make that more confusing than it needs to be.
Right, right now, they come in with the whole project and we give them approval, preliminary approval, and then they get final per phase. And the problem I can see with just doing phases at a time is a lot of times we need to size the infrastructure to accommodate what's coming later. So they come in with phase one and we say, yeah, that looks good, and then they come in with the next phase and say, oh, well, we should have put a twelve-inch water line in there, not a six-inch. Now you gotta dig back through the existing and upsize things to continue with further phases. That's where it gets a little bit messy, because we really need to see the whole project to size the utilities correctly. Like sewer and water lines and. But if you had someone bring you like maybe the birds or something, a hundred lot subdivision, that's a huge, that's gonna make that fifteen days pretty tight, that's a lot of review and. To get done, and then that's a big project to take on in the field, getting constructed all at once.
So, we talked about if the applicant can have an extension, is there anything that would allow the city to have an extension on something like what he's talking about, or if it's a massive subdivision? Can they take more time?
Well. I mean, I don't think you can have an extension except if you s, uh, for the, except for if you scroll down to D one through four, those are kind of your exceptions. So you can automatically get an extra twenty business days if the applicant delays more than forty business days.
Yeah.
And then if, you know, I guess the other one would be. If you can cite to, I don't know, a health or safety issue that might buy you a little time, but I, I can, I guess, really, no, you shouldn't rely on that. So I would just say, if you're worried about not having to man hours to process a large subdivision, just cap how many lots can be processed at a time.
Jared, would there be a way that we even required them to do their infrastructure plan all upfront? Even if they are phasing it, because that really makes sense, I mean, you can't have them just keep, keep coming and adding on and then it doesn't match.
Right, it doesn't work at once through it. And I guess you, if you was hardline, you could say that's your risk, you didn't put a big enough water line in to keep going, but that's. Pretty difficult to say you're not gonna develop further.
Yeah.
Would they claim ignorance?
Yeah, that would be the other solution, if it's just informally warn the applicant, like I see you're just doing a ten lot subdivision right now. In case you're thinking of doing another ninety lots, like just be aware that this, this main you're putting in is only gonna service for ten and you'll have to upgrade it. And then it would just be on the applicant to, you know, be smart enough to realize that.
Do we?
Could we cap it at like, right now, we're at like thirty lots and I think that coincides with some of the fire marshal requirements. Um, could we cap it at thirty and then say additional adjacent development should have a utility master plan? Something along those lines?
Yeah, why not?
I did ask, it sounds like a good idea.
Would they, would it, it probably wouldn't, what, what if they, they came in and they said, well, I didn't know I was going to, is, I mean, would there be any recourse? For you?
I, I mean, at the end of the day, they're gonna have to look in the correct sized line, but.
Right, it, it is on them, yeah.
It's counterproductive, but it also affects those residents that live there now to say, oh, we gotta shut your water off and cut, diggy that, cause they need a bigger one to keep going.
Quality of life issue.
This has probably happened in the past, but I'm just seeing if they've been pretty receptive when you told them that or not, or?
So Jerry, you said. Some, a lot of them don't wanna spend the money to engineer the whole thing and so it's been a bit of a fight, but there's really no other way it works. You can't, you can't base the engineering on thirty lots and then say, now we're gonna serve thirty more, sixty more, ninety more on the same water line. And that's one reason we've required larger developments to be phased and have that preliminary approval.
Isn't that what we've required from that marshay, the northeast up in that area over there, we needed a master plan because?
And that's a prime example, so the piece that they own, they can get by with probably a small sewer line to just do that. But if the rest of Torgaley wants to go through there to get to Rossin's lift station, it needs to be big in their section.
So is there a way to mitigate that, like something we can put in?
So we think you could just change your standards to say that if you're gonna be putting in a subdivision here, that you're gonna extend a road. You just have to put in a main that's big enough to match the expected development as laid out in the general plan.
Well, what if it's not standard?
Cause then you're not focused on like just that subdivision, but any potential growth that would use that same, you know, public facility.
Probably some scenarios you could do that, I don't know if that'd get everything, and if we have a weird system out here, a vacuum sewer system, and that even gets a little bit more complicated with that. Uh, that's something we're gonna have to think about. And I, I, it's not like this, it might happen, we have some kind of pending ones that have been lingering around that are that big and. Um, we have had that problem with not having a phasing plan.
Well, maybe you think about it and then come up with something that you think language would be the best and then.
Maybe Taylor can help us too a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we not just require them to come in in phases and just have the review cycle for each phase? Is that too restrictive, like could we require phases of thirty?
And go through the process?
Yeah, yeah.
Then we still have to have something like Jared saying that they do all of the infrastructure with a master, then.
Yeah, we all have that now, though.
Yeah, we do.
Well, I think we've required that.
We require and that is too restrictive.
Well, and not just, not if it's just them that's gonna be building more phases, but like in that one, we were talking about up at Torgaley's. There's other land there that they don't own, but probably is gonna be developed and so we ask them to give us a master plan. Showing that when those other things tie in, it's gonna accommodate, right?
Yeah, well, and we already did the IFFP and impact analysis for Rossin Ranch to include all of that. I mean, that can be redone, but it's, it has been included in that, all of that property over there is supposed to be soured by Rossin Ranch Lift Station. And that's part of their payback agreement. Uh, maybe the developers of this process didn't think about that.
You know, it's a lot of work to think about, to be honest.
So is that something maybe?
I, I don't know that maybe if we just, like you said, we can cap it, what if we just cap it at thirty units per cycle? And then say, uh, larger developments that'll be connecting utilities will need a utility master plan. I like that.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's more than fair, so if, if an operator, you know, really didn't think about doing another phase later or says they didn't, then.
So we do, that's what we're planning on.
That's just on that, cause you'll make up replace the things, but at least you give them a fair warning that if they're gonna be making a bigger project than thirty lots, then they, you know, better have a, a plan.
Yeah, I, I guess if they don't choose not to do that, then when they come with the next project, it just doesn't work.
Yeah.
What happens if it's not them, like in that situation we were talking about before? If we ask them for a master plan because we know those other ones are gonna be developed, but they're not necessarily the ones developing it?
Make that as part of your checklist.
That they have to do it so it will accommodate other developments?
That is a little tricky too, like when Torgaley's owned it all, that it was easy to say you gotta master plan this. Now that a different, a different person, entity owns just a part of it, it's hard to say you gotta go plan all your neighbor's utilities.
Yeah.
That's tricky, but that's really the only way it's gonna work.
But logically, places to the lift station has gotta be a bigger capacity, cause you go out away from the lift station.
Right. Yep.
You know, that's just.
Only way it works, yeah.
Well, the plan is to have this ready for planning commission to make recommendations in the November meeting, which is November the fourteenth.
I don't think that's, how would we do that, like, cause I feel like we still need to come up with. The administrative part of how we're gonna do this, if you said that needs to happen in conjunction with it. We still have to have time to review everything before it comes to the planning commission, make sure we're okay with the changes.
In order to get this done by the end of the year, it has to be that timeline because that gives city council December, city council needing to approve it.
It's just hard because like, planning commission asked if we could start looking at the subdivision stuff, they're back before, it was before April. And we, it's just, it's frustrating a little bit that it's been left till now and now we're having to rush with something that's so important. I just feel like we need to make sure we get it right.
Well, we'll turn around the draft as fast as we can on our end, so what views, you see, when do you need to bind to, I actually, have you have a public hearing for your planning commission?
Fourteen.
On the ones yet?
Well, I think we should have another work session, at least with the planning commission and hopefully Malcolm, sorry, but. Before it goes on the planning commission agenda to make sure, that will save us time. Because if it comes to planning commission and we're not comfortable with it, it's gonna get tabled and that's gonna put it off further. So if we can at least look at it ahead of time, I think it would be more efficient for our time.
Well, it seems like chapter eight is pretty short up, we need to re- but review his drafts and then these other chapters, we need to get them our updates and then they were really minor.
Yeah.
So the next work session, work session would just include reviewing those other chapters with minor verbiage and.
And making sure this is the way that it's supposed to be.
And then making sure that this was updated through our discussion today.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
Then that would be next work session.
So I think it has to be covered.
If we have someone here, go ahead and see if we ask on some of the hand this. You have someone that he goes to with some questions or not really?
Handsome planning girl, yeah.
Yeah, if he'd ask him about that phasing and I'll do a little work on my end too and just see if they have any ideas that can be unique to our city.
I'll make a note, I, so everything I've compiled, I'm gonna share with everybody, Jacob included, that way, and I'll, I'll start editing the clean. Is it okay if I go ahead and make comments on the clean version?
Please, yeah, mark it up, um, track your changes, edit directly, you know, whatever works, if you wanna do that, anyone else, you know, Malcolm.
Okay.
And then send it over to me, everything you have, I'll make sure that matches my notes and then, uh, yeah, we should be good to go.
So there was a ten dash eight dash fifteen that was completely omitted, it was at the very end. Talking about the section, they only use to subdivide a parcel of land such that no parcel may be more than fifty percent larger than any other parcel. And then it says the land use authority may waive this requirement, do you know why that was taken out or?
Yeah, so if you want, we can put it back in, the idea behind it was to prevent abuse of the minor subdivision process. And I think a more elegant solution would just be to say that if you're gonna do a minor subdivision, it can't require the extension of a road or creation of, of public improvements. Because really the main issue that you don't wanna run into by abuse of the minor subdivision process is proceeding without a plat, because then who knows where the roads are gonna end up? And so if you just require that no road can be built, that then it kind of solves the problem.
Does that say that in here?
But if you, yeah.
It does say that in here now, the way that.
It does, yeah, it's not in chapter eight, because the minor subdivision process is in the other chapters.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, that's, we added that.
Okay. So. Are we gonna be able to get together and do this administrative part, so we know who's gonna be doing which things before this is implemented at the beginning of the year?
Do you think, do you think that has to be done before it's accepted though, the administrative part, I mean, the underlying. Thought about is that you guys can delegate it and so, and that you can update whenever you want and so, I mean, it'd be nice to have it, and hopefully we can.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would feel better if we just had it so that we know what the process is and we don't have to scramble when an application comes in. Just as far as, I, I don't think it should take too long and maybe we can.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind at all.
Well, I'll help with whatever, not, I'm willing to do whatever you need.
Yeah, I'm happy to work on it, not a problem, I can.
Okay, and then as far as those other chapters, I know we're gonna wait to look at those. Those don't affect our timeline, right, we, because we, as part of our strategies for our general plan, the planning commission was gonna look at the subdivision ordinance. And go through everything to make sure, I think we just need to make sure that we've got everything in place so that there's nothing that can bite us. Cause the ordinance says it's gonna be where we have any control over what's happening now, right, so.
Yeah, that's right, and so one caution would be there are a few places that contradict chapter eight in your existing. And so, I mean, if we have that conflict provision that says chapter eight trumps everything, then it shouldn't be a problem, you know, it'd be a little ugly, but like, you'll survive. Or if you want to accept the changes we currently have in there, then it should clean it up a bit.
Okay, so if we have questions after this is all implemented, and let's say next year, the planning commission's going through that subdivision review process. Can we still reach out to you guys to see if we don't wanna do anything that's gonna cause issues by overriding something that?
Oh, definitely, no, that's totally fine, we're more than happy to help, uh, we honestly, just between us. Um, there have been rumors that the state's gonna update this code again in the spring, let's all pray that it doesn't, but we'll see. So, um, yeah, we're fully expecting that, obviously, because you're still bringing some advice, happy to chime in where we can. One thing to note is that our, the, basically the state is funding us right now to work on this, that funding's gonna end in January. So, I mean, we'll be available, like, depends on what our workload is. Um, though if, I mean, if, if we, we have to just like totally revamp, put us with the ordinances or you want additional help, we could always just, uh, work for you on like an ass needed basis to go, so.
And we still will have Madison in place, should still be here.
Yeah.
As long as we don't get one hundred more people.
Yeah.
Does that go by the census or by?
Yeah, you guys have to stop growing.
That's yours, isn't it?
Um, so Brandon had said before that we only have to do one public hearing on this, so if we can't meet the timeline to do the public hearing for.
That's the other, oh, that's the other. No, I'm that long. It's the same.
That's what Brandon told me, there's that. I was to, I was told otherwise by other cities, but that's what he said.
The council's the one actually adopting the ordinance, so.
So we could do the public hearing, because then Morgan could get the agendas out tomorrow, because she's going to be gone for a week. So she could put this on the agenda and then we could have the public hearing prior to city council.
I would have your city attorney confirm, but yeah, the legislative action's going to be taking place at council, not at the planning commission meeting.
Does that give us enough time to get back together before that meeting?
Work on the administrative.
Well, not just that, but to look at what they come up with and make sure everything's in there the way that we discussed it next, I feel like there's a good amount of stuff that we talked about. And we need to look at it and make sure it's right before it goes on the agenda, otherwise it's gonna get tabled.
We have a set meeting, like right now, when do we want to meet next? Or we're gonna?
Next Tuesday.
Well, I guess we'll send out a poll until you can get there, but, uh, but you were saying, Cherry, it's gonna be on the fourteenth?
Mm-hmm, cause then it can be on the agenda for city council. I don't know what the date is, that first one in December, because if not, even if it got bumped and it was the next one December, that's all we have the if.
That meeting on the sixth was canceled, that was supposed to be here with, well, that's my regional council.
That's right.
So maybe we do it that night. I don't know.
Quality has something to do with it.
And I don't know if we need, I mean, if city council wants to be here.
No, the driver on doesn't matter.
That's great, but I think they were involved in this conversation and so if they don't wanna come two nights in a row, cause they have a council meeting the following day. I think it's important that the planning commission is here.
So we, we'd need to let Morgan know so she could notice it, cause it would have to be in every meeting.
Does the that day work if we did it this day? That was the day that we're gonna do that dinner here and like our council, it's true, people might have it open already.
Yeah. I'll be gone, but Jamie can sit in.
November sixth?
Has the recorder.
At six thirty or a different time, I mean, I'll be late, but.
It doesn't matter to me, I had it blocked out for that thing, so whatever works for you guys.
Um, yeah. Jacob, can you turn that around, bed six?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. We'll meet on the sixth.
I'll get changes in a track document by.
At six, is that it? Six thirty, six thirty, well, on the sixth, that's.
Six thirty. Why prefer six, well, it doesn't matter, six thirty, thirty, okay, that's good. That's good.
It was on the sixth, it's six thirty. And it's just another work session, right?
Yeah, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be reviewing the changes and are we going to, Morgan, are we gonna send him all of our updates and review that one? Or are we just gonna rely on the chapter eight trumps and we're not gonna mess with all those other chapters yet? Right, because in order to review those other chapters, we're gonna have to get all the ordinance changes to him and then he'll reflect then.
I hate rushing through.
I can send all of that stuff tomorrow, it's all be a, be a, if they need to leave.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Uh, do you sign six or six thirty?
Six thirty, six thirty. So, and I know you guys are already under the gun, but if at all possible to get the revised ordinance to us, at least a day or two, at least a day or two ahead, so we can just go through it and have time. Otherwise, it's gonna be another marathon meeting to school.
Yeah.
I'd like to have time to go through it, so that would be appreciated if it's possible.
But it should next time be a pretty clean, because we've already discussed everything tonight, so now it's just a matter of getting it changed. So it really shouldn't have to be a line by line.
So we'll get in those ordinances.
Yeah, we'll get the ordinances.
I can send track changes by end of day tomorrow, maybe Friday morning, we'll, we'll try end of day tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is it a joint session or just a planning commission work session?
What do you guys wanna do?
Open invitation. Yeah, it's like.
Well, joint.
We're not really, I mean, other than just input.
Support.
Well, you guys are the ones that are gonna have to pass the ordinance, so.
The ordinance, yeah, but.
That's why I thought it would be important to have your input on what.
Yeah, or mark it as joint. I'll mark it as joint, if you wanna come.
Sure.
If we gotta pass it. Great. We'll get to work.
You to what?
Then you give your burnt dinner and a pillow and drinks.
It would've been worse if we had the.
Thank you, Jacob. You wanna, if you also have to stay late and be somewhere else there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
We're, we're staying, we, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
With the administrative stuff, that we're gonna set up, I'll start working on some of that, it's like a draft over to you, and I think it was laymost that out, just see an email back and forth, and then we can talk about it, if you do.